Roll call, please.
Richard Patterson.
Here.
Michael Cristaldi.
Here.
Jim Gallantino.
Here.
Craig Palmasano.
Here.
Michael Richmond.
Here.
Remy Pelosi.
Here.
Stephen Jezekki.
Here.
Michael Rafiu.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form, which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. I'd like to hear a motion for the approval of the minutes of the meeting of March 30th, 2023.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to hear a motion for approval of decisions and resolutions, number 11, 2023, Appointment of Acting Board Secretary, number 12, 2023, Michael and Pamela Clark, number 13, 2023, Paul Verna, number 14, 2023, Dennis De Sabatino, number 15, 2023, Marco A. Arnon, and number 16, 2023, Revolution Builders, Inc.
I make a motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. We have bringing up, we are going to vote on appointing Roger as the board's engineer, and there's two significant reasons. One is the applicant's engineering fees would go to the city instead of the engineering firm, but more importantly, it makes it much more convenient for the applicants with one stop in the planner's office. Instead of having separate accounters offsite, it would really cut down on the process and help the applicants.
Rich, is that a motion?
It's technically engineer and planner.
Engineer and planner, yeah.
Yeah, motion of second and all in favor. Now, Pamela, did that resolution make it onto this agenda? If not, we can just do it next time.
It did.
Number 17.
Yes, 17.
So I think we can appoint him and make a motion. It's resolution number 17 to 2023 to appoint Mr. McLaren as board engineer and planner. Do a motion and a second and all in favor.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Congratulations, Roger.
Congratulations. Thank you. You get a raise on that?
Yeah. Just did.
Okay, first case is S A J Associates LLC, 7800 Ventnor Avenue, Block 105, Block 25, located in the CBC zoning district, seeking a site plan approval in order to construct a mixed-use building with commercial at grade and four residential units above. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying him is satisfied. Mr. McLaren, please be sworn in.
Mr. McLaren, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I would actually defer to the applicant to lead us off on this since this is the second go around and they can update the changes to the application. It's a new application, but they've made significant changes, so it's not the same application. I'll confirm it in my report afterwards.
Yeah, and Chris, it's a new application, so whatever happened last time, whatever board members were there then, pretty much irrelevant.
I'm sorry?
It's a new application, not any type of continuation.
I understand.
So new, I don't know if all these board members were here last time.
Okay. Everybody will be well versed in what's going on.
I just do, I want to reiterate that there's no variances requested at its preliminary and final site plan approval.
Thanks, Roger. Members of the board, my name is Chris Malinson. I represent S A J Associates with respect to this application to the planning board seeking preliminary file site plan approval pursuant to Margate's site plan ordinance. S A J owns the property identified where the Billy Hose site is. It's Block 25 and Block 105, it's 7800 Ventnor Avenue. What is proposed to take place there is the demolition of Billy Hose, the restaurant, the unfinished restaurant right now, and the improvement of that parcel with commercial at grade, residential above, in performance with your ordinance. The commercial at grade will be 1800 square feet, and there will be four units above. The density for the four units above meets the ordinance requirements. There is no ratio established in the ordinance for the commercial versus the upstairs units. In other words, it doesn't say you have to have a certain percentage of commercial, like how many units you have upstairs. The ordinance does not include that information. When we were here two months ago, we had 2800 square feet of commercial, but had to remove some in order to accommodate the commercial parking that everybody thought was necessary. And we have, of course, incorporated that parking. The site now has 17 parking spaces, sufficient for both the residential and sufficient for the commercial as well. And that's actually a couple more spaces that exist on the site now. Kevin Olant, Andy Schaefer here as our consultants. Andy's our engineer. Kevin is our designer from Stephen Fenwick's office. They can be both sworn at the same time, Leo.
Yes.
And I'm offering Kevin for fact testimony, not expert testimony. He's designer on the project for Fenwick's office and can testify with respect to the design of the building and how it came to be.
Okay, Mr. Olant and Mr. Schaefer, if you can each state your name and business address, I'll swear the two in together.
Kevin Olant, 646 West Ocean Heights, Ablynwood. Andy Schaefer, 1425 Cantillon Boulevard, Maze Landing.
And please, if you could each please raise your right hand, each swear affirm the testimony you'll give tonight will be the truth.
I do, do.
And Mr. Schaefer, engineer and planner, correct?
Engineer and planner, correct.
And he's obviously appeared before on this application previously.
That's a relatively straightforward application. We were here two months ago. There were a couple of variances that we talked about for quite some time. I went through a bunch of resolutions to compare commercial parking with this site and that, and those sites. I don't think I'll need to go through that tonight since there is no variance for parking to comply with, as is the other site improvements. The other suggestion was a variance for the height of the building to give the first residential, commercial space, a little bit higher ceiling for better shopping or better retail environment. That also is not on the table. The board thinks that's a good idea. I have notice for additional variances if necessary, and that's something we certainly would entertain. We think it's a good idea, and we wanted to bring to you a by right application. Kevin. Kevin, if you would give the board the benefit of your qualifications, understanding you're a designer with Mr. Fenwick's office?
Yes.
You are an architect, though, in other states?
Yes, I'm registered in Maryland.
You're dispartaging the design of this building and?
Yes.
And the plan submitted to the board?
Yes.
Just walk the board through the building. I'll have Andy do the technical data. Just walk the board through the building, how it lays out, where the parking is, et cetera.
Okay, so here's the exterior rendering looking from the corner. Ventnor and Douglas. So it's a three-story mixed-use building. The at-grade is a commercial space, and then there's four residential units above. You can see from the layout, it's designed with shop windows along both street frontages. All the parking is shielded, it's all in the rear. So in the floor plan, here's Ventnor Avenue, here's Douglas. You can see that all the parking is behind. The residential parking is against the property line facing the beach. The commercial parking is all underneath the residential units.
So that's where the access is?
Right, so there's access through a lobby to get into the stair tower for the residential units and also the back doors for the commercial units.
So it's how that downstairs circulation works in terms of where you access the building and access to retail? What other possibilities are there for access?
So we, it's unknown who the tenants will be, but it's set up to have a door off the corner, an essential element in the center that has an opportunity for two entrances. So it could be up to three tenants, 1800 square foot space. Better?
No, it's not.
Oh.
Thank you.
There you go, okay.
Do you have that access from the corner, access to the center?
Yeah, there's a recess in the center for nice shop windows and opportunity for up to two entrances. So it could be three tenants. It's 1800 square feet now after we've made additional parking in the rear.
And when you come in from the back, go through the elevator is and how the residential components are accessed and the commercial?
How much was commercial last time? 2800. Now it's 1800. So there's two entrances available, one off of Douglas from the street and then one from the parking area in the back. That's where the stair and elevator are. And then there's an exit passageway, rated passageway connecting to Douglas. And the commercial then fronts along. And then there's four storage units that are required, outdoor storage units for each of the dwelling units down at grade.
Do you have enough area for trash for all these units? 16 bedrooms?
Well, there's, it's set up so there's trash for each unit, and then there's a trash room for the commercial. So we think there is sufficient trash, provided.
How big are the trash units for the residents?
Well, I mean, depending on, this is, depending on how it's laid out, it could be like four small cans or you could put one or two big cans.
Right, yeah. So there's at least room for a couple of cans for each?
Yes.
Each unit has, is how many bedrooms?
There are three bedrooms on each unit. And the size is around, it's a little under 2100 square foot per unit.
Four bedrooms, four bedrooms.
Yes, four bedrooms, sorry. It's been a while.
Did the square footage of the residential change or the?
No, that hasn't changed. We left it in the same. We just changed the at-grade work for the lobby and staircase.
Please, on the outside of the building, tell us a little bit about the facade treatments and what we expect to see when the building is built.
Chris, would you talk to no microphone?
The outside of the building, tell us a little bit about the facade treatments and what we expect to see when the building is built.
So we wanted to make something that complements the streetscape. It engages, so it's out to the property line, so you have a nice storefront, keeps the streetscape for the commercial district. The ground floor is going to be masonry, large glass storefront windows, so it engages the public walking by. We have a large sign band we've put in, so there's a lot of opportunity for different tenants to put signage up. And then the residential units, so the style is kind of a transitional style. But a nice masonry base, upstairs would be board and batten, shingles siding, lots of glass. We provide private decks for each unit.
Is there a differentiation between the downstairs commercial and the upstairs in terms of maybe a setback or depth change?
There's a, it's about eight inches setback, depending along the facade in different spots.
On both sides?
And we tried to break the facade up so that there's some articulation in the facade, so it's not one simple box. We provided a sloped roof element, kind of in keeping with what's in the neighborhood.
Are the windows on the, are they floodproof for the commercial area?
Yeah, there'll be large flood panels. They're going to have to be about six foot high because of the elevation requirement. It's two foot.
Two foot?
Yeah. So it's still a good store window, nice and open to feel, yeah.
And that area is all floodproof as well?
What's that?
That's all floodproof as well?
Yeah, the whole first floor is going to be a floodproof, to be dry floodproof. So there'll be flood panels at every opening, every window, every door, and then the walls will be, you know, masonry construction that's reinforced.
And there are established floodproof standards for commercial buildings like this?
Yes, we've done them before. Atlantic City, Ventnor, yeah.
And you guys were also responsible for doing the ocean, ocean back building in the corner, the old?
Oh, yeah, it was Cross and Lucy. Cross and Lucy, yes. Ocean Home Back, it was.
Ocean Home Back, that's right. Thanks, Kevin, very much.
Chris, previously, there was no residential at all at that site, is that correct? No residence at all?
Where, the first floor?
No, the whole building, the whole property. What?
Of course there was.
There were residents being Billy Hose?
Four residential units above, first application and this application, yes.
No, 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 originally, yes.
I'm asking.
No, 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 apartments above Billy Hose, no.
It was all commercial?
Yes.
Hundred percent commercial and no residence at all. And now we're looking at 8,334 square foot of residential and 1800 square foot of commercial.
I understand that. And last time we came in, last time we came in with 2800 square feet?
I wasn't here last time.
Last, sorry, we came in with 2800 square feet of commercial.
But now it's down to a lot less.
It's a lot, I understand that. The board wanted to see the commercial parking, so we had to swap.
Yeah, because it has commercial parking.
Bedroom count, the number of people like, that's controlled by the ordinance. This application meets that standard. The residential is by right, it complies with the ordinance.
Yeah, I understand. I understand, I'm just saying what we have and what we're proposing.
I like the other plan a little better, though.
I wasn't here.
I understand. Andy. Andy, just give the board the benefit of your credentials to testify tonight.
I've been doing this in the state for 37 years, professional planner.
Yeah, we already accepted his credentials.
Very good, thanks, passion. If you would, just take the board through the kind of the surrounding development patterns, the zoning, what's proposed.
Okay, you've already taken a lot of that away from me in your introduction, but again, an 1800 square foot first floor commercial and the residential, you can see the outline of the overhang of the building that I'm just pointing to. For the four units, we have compliant parking for both commercial and residential.
17 spaces?
17 spaces.
Including accessible space?
Correct, including the one necessary accessible space, as well as our entrance will be off Douglas Avenue, which is a better solution than what is there now today.
Why's that? Talking about the access, I'm sorry, Rich. He talks about the access that's being closed on Ventnor Avenue.
Correct, the access being closed on Ventnor Avenue, and the county really is looking for less access points to Ventnor Avenue than currently exists. So we are complementing the new introduction, or the introduction of the new site compared to the old by having one access point off the side street rather than the main street of Ventnor.
And the fact that there's not a parking lot anymore facing Ventnor Avenue, we're facing the sidewalk, we're crossing the sidewalk on Ventnor Avenue is helpful.
It's helpful and it's also aesthetic in terms of hiding the parking from the main thoroughfare shopping center, walking and also the visual corridor created by Ventnor Avenue for cars.
The property is in the CBD zone?
It is.
And mixed use is permitted?
Mixed use is permitted.
And the density of the units upstairs is a permitted density of four?
The density is permitted, yes.
Actually, slightly under what's allowed.
Slightly under what's permitted, yes.
And the bedroom count is okay so long as the parking meets requirement?
That's correct. The residential site improvement standards, as well as the ordinance, are met in terms of parking requirements in this particular case.
Okay.
Can you ask me a question?
Certainly.
2.5 for a parking space.
Yes.
What's the 0.5? What kind of cars?
Now, we're talking about an average. The 2.5 goes to the total count. I understand, so the 2.5 goes towards the total count.
We didn't write it. That's what the city presents us with. I understand that. 16 bedrooms are allowed.
They give you the 0.25.
16 bedrooms are allowed, 0.25? It's an average where you have several units. You can average them out based on 0.25.
I know exactly what you're saying, but it's just too, just too much.
That's not something in the ordinance, that's not a standard in the ordinance, it's too much.
I do understand that, I'm just saying the 0.25.
That comes from the state, that's a state requirement.
That's a car with three cars.
You understand, you understand what I'm saying, you're just being?
I totally understand what you're saying. I just don't agree with it.
Then it needs to be wholesale ordinance change.
Yeah, let's move on from that particular aspect because they do meet the requirement.
Stormwater is handled how?
Stormwater is handled by virtue that we're reducing the impervious coverage compared to existing slightly.
And how's it handled physically?
Oh, physically, it runs into the street and into the city public stormwater collection system.
And that's the standard way that in an urban environment, how stormwater is handled when you have a developed area?
Absolutely, yes.
How about sight lighting? Is that being removed or replaced, how's that work?
You know, sight lighting is being replaced with what's there as haphazard right now. So today, we are proposing two lights that are mounted on the actual unit itself up higher, and it'll meet the requirements of the sight lighting that's in the ordinance.
And is there street lighting or pole lighting that's being provided consistent with Margate's design standard?
There is. There are several streetlights being added that are consistent with the requirements, and they are compliant.
And circulation, how does it work in and out of the parking area?
It's a compliant-sized parking area. It is dead end, but it's not very deep, and it has the compliant drive aisle width as well as a compliantly sized parking space.
So you don't have interference backing out or coming in with other cars, hopefully?
No, in terms of circulation and parking numbers, there are no variances, no waivers being requested.
And you agree with us that there's no standard in the ordinance that establishes a ratio between commercials, square footage at grade versus the number of units upstairs?
That's correct, yes.
In fact, there could be, there could be less than 1800, it could be 900.
That's correct, yes.
Chris, let me interject there. How about 10 feet?
10 feet for what?
Commercial space. You say there's no ratio in there, so you think?
I'm talking about, I'm sorry, Rich, I'm talking about commercial square footage versus number of units.
That's exactly what I'm saying, so if you have 99%.
I'm talking about parking spaces.
I'm not talking about parking spaces, I'm talking about the ratio that you say doesn't matter.
Oh, you have 10 feet?
Yes. Isn't that ridiculous?
We hope that doesn't happen, I agree with that.
Well, 100 feet, what, where is that line that you, where is?
That's where this board should determine when they drafted ordinance modification.
Exactly, so it's up to this board, so it's not?
When they're amending an ordinance, not?
We're not amending an ordinance here, but if you come in with, if you come in here with a 10-foot commercial space and a 10,000 square foot residential space?
I would expect the outside.
Why?
Because, because you're going to determine that doesn't work.
Okay, so why are we going to determine? Because it's too small, it's too big?
Why did you grant these properties across from Johnny's with the exact same amount of first square footage and same number of units? Why was that granted?
I'll tell you exactly why it was granted. It was granted because this board did not anticipate what it was going to be until it was built. And everyone on this board agrees that was the worst mistake we made, and it's an aberration for Margate.
I don't agree with that.
Everybody except Michael.
Sorry.
Okay, everybody except you.
I would submit?
I like you, Michael.
Mr. passion, I would submit to you that there's more commercial square footage in this application than in the last five that came before this board with the mixed use development. More.
I would say to you that when we saw that development and then we see this development, which as you say, is identical to that one.
It's identical, identical in terms of units.
That we do not have to use that as a precedence, you know it's not precedence. Everybody except, what's his name?
Right.
Looked at it and said, this was a mistake.
Because of the way it looks, because of the way it looks.
No, because of the vast, you've got two little places in the front and you've got this huge thing there. They could use that as the trash containers.
Rich, that's all I'm saying is, if you expect an applicant to comply with a square footage basis, it has to be in the ordinance. It has to be. You can't do it on an ad hoc basis.
Well, then it could be 10 feet.
You can't do it on that.
How could we turn it down if it's, if there's no ratio?
Establish your ratio.
What?
Establish your ratio. You've had 20 years to do it.
Well, I would say it's a matter of what's the intent of the master plan.
But you can't, but you can't, on an ad hoc basis, instill a standard that's not in the ordinance.
No, but we can say, is it reasonable or not reasonable?
No, that's not how it works.
Unreasonable?
It's not how it works, it has to be in the ordinance.
Sorry.
I think Leo can tell you that.
No. No. It's not a commercial property.
So?
You've got?
It's a commercial, it's a commercial property.
It's not a commercial property, this is a residential property. It's not.
It's a commercial business zone.
And they attended the master plan back in 2016, was exactly what was in town. Ninety percent of them was one-story with a couple apartments on top. And when we saw what was happening, we realized these are not really commercial, these are residential first. The intent was the commercial property is the basis for the property. If you have some residential on top.
So what do you like that, what's the standard tonight?
Standard is this doesn't fit.
Based on what?
Based on the fact that it's 90% residential.
And what would work?
What would work?
Yeah.
Well, 2800 feet was better.
Okay, well?
I'm not saying that would work, what would work? Get rid of two residential units, that would work.
The residential applies with the ordinance. As the commercial?
That's why you have this, and what did you do when you did that?
That's all I'm saying is?
You cut the commercial in half.
I'm trying to work, trying to work with the story.
Stop and listen to me for a second, one person at a time, and I'm talking. You had a 2800 square foot, you needed parking, so you got rid of it. If you needed more parking, you get rid of more, and like you just said, you'd be satisfied with 900 square feet in there. I'm saying that doesn't meet the intent of what we did or what we're doing. And to me, this isn't even a commercial property.
Where's the intent or is established? Where? What I'm saying, you can't, you can't, you can't make a guessing game.
Where's the intent, the intent is what existed in 2016?
But you can't make any guessing game, and this is guessing game.
Well, intent is a guessing game for any case. We look at what's the intent of the master plan for any case that we're doing here. So it's always a guessing game, and that's what the board is here for.
I'm just trying to work with the board and bring in here what you told me to two months ago, or what you suggested two months ago.
No, 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 not at all. We suggested we turned it down last time.
On the suggestion that commercial parking was insufficient?
That's why we turned it down last time.
That's right.
We didn't say come back.
But, let me finish with Mr. Schaefer, you know, I can talk all night.
Go ahead.
That's all I have, Andy, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anything else on the board?
Chris, you sent a letter, a couple waiver requests, I think.
I sent a letter outlining the waiver request in Mr. McLaren's report.
I'll incorporate those requests.
Yeah, Rich, I have something to say.
Mr. Mike?
Yeah, the intention, when I went over the master plan, there was a danger of losing our retail spaces. And this is an example of that, where people were using retail spaces to make more residential spaces because the demand for residential properties is so high. That is something that is not intended on the master plan to turn residential spaces into, commercial properties into residential spaces.
To this extent.
To this extent.
You know, I was involved in the master plan in 2016 in New York.
I was.
Oh, okay, that's fine, but I'm just saying, he wasn't. And when we drafted that master plan, you know, we wanted to get more commercial, and part of that was still in the mixed use. So?
Wait, would you?
At the time, I don't really recall, you know, why at that time didn't we establish a ratio?
Because at that time, what we had in town was acceptable, and this is completely different from?
Well, then why haven't we gotten together like we have on other things that we didn't agree with and, you know, change your ordinance?
We are.
Okay, we're going to change it, that's fine, and I'm okay with that. But I don't want to waste, I'll get into it later. I mean, it's a by right subdivision, right? Am I right?
Site, site plan, not a subdivision.
Right.
No variances are requested.
No variance for?
They meet all parking, all walk.
Your legal opinion, if something happens and it's not approved, what's going to happen?
Depends what Chris decides.
Right.
I mean.
Leo, you were going to advise the board what is expected of them with a by right site plan from case law?
I would, it's a major site plan, it meets the ordinance requirements, it has all the required parking, the commercials.
Line of the case law says, when it meets the ordinance, the board shall grant the approval.
Does that, Leo, does that mean we have to vote yes?
I'm not going to tell any board member how they have to vote.
Exactly.
I can give you what the law is, generally speaking, when you have a by right site plan, they meet all the requirements, you're limited.
This meets all the requirements for parking for the residences and the commercial space. I don't even understand how that's possible, but?
It does.
I don't understand how that could be possible, but I hear?
Well, we didn't anticipate it.
A change.
We didn't anticipate projects like this 10 years ago.
I agree.
I'm done with witnesses, I have just a brief, some comments.
Well, he's not done yet.
Okay.
Pardon me?
I just have to complete the record for purposes of tonight.
No, absolutely.
I just want to make reference to resolution 4900, 2021, Midge Properties, where four units were approved with 1800 square feet of commercial space and no commercial parking at all.
You know where Starbucks is, you know that whole block, you know the Hurk.
Sorry, I'm almost done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You hesitated, Chris.
I'd like to make reference to Resolution twenty-two hyphen twenty thirteen, hyphen twenty-two hyphen two oh one three. The FCF application, incorporate that into the record, please, with respect to residential approvals and the commercial parking insufficiency and variance that was granted.
Well, that was the one across from Johnny's?
The first one was across from Johnny's, midge.
Midge, and then? Okay.
Um, FCS is, Leo, I believe, Thomas, Thomas in Atlantic.
Got you, yeah, that, okay.
As well as Resolution fifty hyphen twenty eighteen. Relates to commercial parking variance, incorporate that into the record, please. Resolution forty-four hyphen twenty seventeen. A mixed use building with zero commercial parking. Resolution forty hyphen twenty twenty-one. This was the old Chelsea, Chelsea Title Building from Monroe, where you allowed a reduction of commercial spaces for an expansion of the commercial space.
How much residential was there?
None. Just additional commercial, with late industrial development. Resolution forty-seven hyphen twenty twenty-two. Zbaggalivo application at Coolidge and Atlantic. Coolidge and Vender.
How much commercial was there? Four thousand square feet.
Right, with six units above, and no commercial parking.
Are you familiar with that?
It's telling you about a retail space, is, is-
Go ahead.
It's telling you about a retail space, right, is by having no commercial parking.
I didn't hear you.
Trying to get all that retail space agreed, eliminating the commercial parking.
Chris, this is the first case since we've seen those places built and realized that they are illegitimate commercial properties.
I'm giving the resolutions from ten years ago.
Go ahead. I keep thinking you're done, but just tell me when you're done, and I won't interrupt.
And then the resolution from two thousand nine, Sports Development, Inc. That's a golf course that had no parking.
How much residential was there?
None, Rich.
Thank you.
With those resolutions incorporated into the record, I'm, I'm done.
Are you familiar with the, the Heritage Block over here, you're familiar with?
Rich, I grew up here, I'm familiar with it.
Hmm?
I grew up here, I'm familiar with it.
I don't hear-
I grew up here, I'm familiar with it.
Right, and you don't see that as an, as what we anticipated of, of what-
No, because we're not supposed to say that, no, I know, I look at what you've approved over the last fifteen or twenty years as an example.
With eighty-three percent or eighty-five percent commercial and that much residential?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did approve that and, and we never should have done that.
Thomas in Atlantic, no difference, little tiny real estate office downstairs. And six units.
Mm-hmm. Was that built after two thousand sixteen?
I'm sorry?
Was that built after two thousand sixteen?
No, no.
I think it was.
Okay, what's the difference? What's the difference?
Because it wasn't there when everything else in town, and ninety-nine percent of them have one, basically, one-to-one for commercial space over residential. We would never hold you to that, but that's what it was.
The Heritage Building has no parking. Right?
I don't know, there's parking behind it, yeah, there is.
There's a city lot.
No, right behind the building, there's an alley of parking.
Back there in the Eastman area, there's no parking for those residential units. None.
Well, I see the parking back there, I can't tell you-
It's not a property where Starbucks is.
I can't tell you.
No parking, Starbucks, Starbucks, what?
Where?
Starbucks, zero parking.
Right. Right, any existing commercial place with no parking gets to keep it.
Well, but you want to compare, you want to say that's the intent, so let me do that, field without parking, is that, is that fair to say?
For Starbucks?
Yeah.
What, what can we do about a place that existed for a hundred years?
But you're comparing this to that, don't compare them two because they're different.
It's not different, that is a mixed use and that's what we were looking for, with parking.
What's definition? Not what's in your ordinance.
Done? Anyone from the pub, wait, anybody from the, anyone from the public have any comments? Please come forward, state your name and address, and then pause and wait to be sworn in, please. Name and address.
Julie Jorder, one oh five South Clermont Ave, Margate.
How do you spell your last name?
Jorder, J-O-A-R-D-E-R.
Ms. Jorder, please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Uh, I do.
Thank you.
Um, my husband and I, this is one of our projects, and I don't know all the details, but I know that we not, want nothing better, we want Margate to do well, I love Margate, we've been here since twenty twenty, my kids love it, um, we spend our summers here, I don't, like, I, I don't understand all of the rules, but if it's, I, I, anyway, I just want to say, like, I'm not trying to do something that's like not good for the town, but I don't understand why there's so anim, much animosity, and like, what is actually the problem if it's not, you know what I mean, there's, it's following all the rules.
Well, I think we said that, that this is basically a residential property in a commercial zone. Ninety percent or eighty-five or ninety percent residential that, me, I don't vote for the board, I don't see this as a legitimate commercial project.
It's not ninety percent or ninety-five percent, if you're going to say that, get the record accurate.
What is it?
I don't know.
Eighty, uh, seven percent. I'm sorry, eighty-three percent. Go ahead.
So, basically, on this road, you want to have no residential?
No, no, you can say that.
No? Why can't there be residential on top of the commercial? Pardon?
Sixteen bedrooms.
It meets that. Mike, it meets that requirement, but they can, in the, in the, in the whole project, if you look at the project as a whole, look, you're going to rent those places out, down underneath, you wouldn't have to, you could walk away from this, finances mean nothing, you can walk away from this with those four units up there, there's really not a necessity to make this place viable.
For some commercial?
That, that really, it means nothing.
I, I retract this. I'm excited to have sho, I lo, I would love to live on top of shopping, I don't, I really don't understand, like, why-
Well, it was, it was a restaurant.
Yeah.
You know how few there are in Margate? And how many residences have been built over commercial properties? That's what I think this discussion is. We want to preserve commercial, but we, like, shopping, yes, restaurants, it is a restaurant, we've just lost a restaurant, and we're going to add sixteen bedrooms. You, do you have a parking space at your home? A lot of people have to park on the street, there's a huge shortage of parking, so I think these are some of the issues that are-
But we do have parking in the back, behind there.
Correct, but for-
And we even cut, we had to cut the commercial to give them the parking space.
I understand, but it was previously a restaurant and parking was only for the restaurant because there weren't, there weren't any residences. So, these are the, these are all the issues that are, the board is, you know, discussing and has some concerns about. So, it's, it's not that we don't want more shopping and we certainly want more restaurants and to keep our commercial, but there ha, you know, obviously, we're talking about, there has to be some balance as to, you know, how we're going to maintain it and how we're going to accommodate residences, because clearly, that's how investors or real estate is, you know, people are going to make money. So, I hear what you're saying.
It would have been a more, uh, it would have been more in your favor of having more commercial and getting rid of some residential units, not no residential units, but that's up to you, we can't tell you what to do, but that would have been in your favor instead of, you had a problem with parking, you cut commercial in half, or forty percent or forty-one percent.
Why should they do that if it, if it conforms with the big shoes? Why should they do that if it conforms with the big shoes? They have enough parking for residential, they have enough parking for commercial. So, why should they do that if it conforms with the big shoes? Why are we here making laws and, and exposing ourselves to legal jeopardy if we don't vote for it? Because like Mr. Ballinson says, what's, what's the statute say?
The statute says, the board shall grant the approval if it conforms to Jordans.
So, why are we even voting?
No, that's what Mr. Palmas said, I said. Nobody tells us how to vote, it says we shall.
You know, I took, I, I was driving around today looking at different cases. We have ten of them, and I could not believe the amount of construction going on in Margate. I mean, we're, we're, there's, there's fricking five, six, seven bedroom houses going up all over town. Now, you know, why are we concerned, you know, sixteen bedrooms, sixteen bedrooms, literally between, I'm sure everybody else looked at the cases, between Brumson Avenue, I never go back there, Quincy Avenue, Thurlow Avenue, I mean, it's like unbelievable. Huh? That's what I'm saying, so we're, oh, sixteen bedrooms, well, there's a zillion bedrooms being built all through Margate.
Mike, it's, it's commercial. How many commercial properties are back on Brumson Avenue with Thurlow Avenue?
Well, that, that's not the point.
It is the point.
No, the point is that it conforms to the zoning. If we want to change it, I have no problem with that, but you just can't spot zone. You can't say, you can't take something, you can't say, uh, I, this house is allowed to be two and a half stories and, you know, with no variances, and then say, all right, you got to make it two stories. You can't do that.
Anyway, it would-
Am I right?
It would be way prettier than existing restaurants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Name and address, please.
I'm Donna Polini, I live at ten South Franklin Avenue in Margate.
Ms. Polini, please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, I understand the variances and what you're saying, but when something is eighteen hundred square feet in a very square, narrow part of the city, and you have four times the amount of residential, it's morphed from being a commercial property to a residential property. I live one block away, and I know what the parking is like, and even if there is two point five for each person, four bedrooms should be four cars, maybe three, and you only have one hand, wait, one second, please, you only have one handicap when you have residential on one side and commercial on the other side parking? You need at least two handicaps, even if you're, even if you're thinking probably-
When we come to, to revise the ordinance, you can come to the meeting and talk about it. But right now, what our ordinance says, that was established in two thousand sixteen, allows that building to be built, with no variances. Okay?
And that may be the case.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm, I'm saying, you know, I, I have no problem with changing the ordinance, allowing, making it three parking spots, three, I don't care.
Past mistake, yeah, past mistake shouldn't be future. Look at that, like you said, the place that's going up now, that's going to be rented out by the week?
Well, who knows?
Two bedrooms, one bath?
That's not true, that was baloney from the political campaign. Please, don't bring any of that up.
How do I know it's baloney?
Because you read it out of that stupid newspaper.
Okay, I'm just saying, the character of the seventy-eight hundred block is commercial, and it's morphing into residential. And it's a very tight space, yes, okay, on Thurlow, they're all individual houses with yards and parking. This is a very tight corner, there's a bank on the other side, across is Grains and Greens and Boca, which you used to make into this whole outdoor space, I mean, it, it's got to go back to what it was, you know, not just morph into residential, everywhere you can fit a building. Okay, that's it for me.
I don't care we change the ordinance tomorrow, but as of today-
I'm just begging you to consider it, we just can't continue to make mistakes like this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Marla Restle, I live at thirty-one oh seven Atlantic Avenue in Longport. Anything else?
Just wait to be sworn in.
Marla, just got to swear in, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to say that again? No, okay, so, I, I love the project, um, I feel like somebody's going to come in, it's not going to be the restaurant that it was, and, you know, that's sad, I guess, it's always sad to see something change, I mean, hell, I posted a picture of myself from high school with a prom date, like, you know, would I want to go back, I would, um, we're not doing that, you know, and right now, we are where we are, and I kind of feel like I'm a rule, I play by the rules, so, like, if we're playing by the rules and still getting denied, like, how do you play? How do you play the game? I mean, I play pickleball, if somebody was going to step in the kitchen and make the point, I don't like it, I don't like it. It's like, why does that work for you and not for me? So, um, I don't know, like, I just, I'm a rule player, I love what they're doing, it's going to be some kind of residential, they have parking, we have more parking than probably anything else that's been built so far, so, I feel like we're a trendsetter, kind of, um, go two thousand twenty-three, um, but, yes, and we're going to, who knows, it could be a restaurant downstairs, it could be not a restaurant. No, can't be a restaurant? What, well, that's-
That, that, that's for that restaurant.
That's not, yeah, that's not-
Well, I, I don't, it can't be a restaurant?
Yeah, it could be a restaurant.
Okay, I was about to say, like, I felt like that was up to the builders and to, you know, future planning, but if it could be a restaurant, I mean, that's up to future, you know, possibilities. And, so, it might be, uh, it could be a delicatessen, I don't know, um, in New York, they have some great little shops that I love to go in, where food is sold and it's pre-made, just kind of like seafood and that seafood marketplace that just got redone with, you know, done, and um, people love that, and so, as far as having residential above, that's, that's what it's going to be, and they have the parking, but, um, I think it's going to be well viewed rather than that eyesore that's there now, and, um, that's my say, so, anyhow, uh,
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Public portion's closed, anything else on the board? I want to get on the record. The report. Hmm? Want to get my report on there? Yes. First off, let's go by the engineer's report with the waivers requested from, uh, Mr. Ballinson. The letter dated May twenty-fifth, they're requesting waivers, actually, number one, to allow one photo, this request was withdrawn, multiple photos were submitted with the application, they're asking for waivers for items two through nine on the letter, I would agree with those requests, and that's consistent with the engineer's report. Going to the planning report and zoning report. Application of S A J Associates LLC, seventy-eight hundred Vettner Avenue, block one zero five, lot twenty-five, located in the CBD zone. Based on the effect of firm, the minimum elevation, or base load elevation is elevation ten, fourteen is required for residential as a minimum, eleven for the commercial, so you, you would need about five or six feet of floodproofing from the sidewalk level to up. They're seeking preliminary and final major site plan. There are no variances, I'm not going to go through the background, it's already been discussed. Zoning chart on page two and three, I'd like to just go through these, the minimum lot area for this zone is four thousand square feet, they have eighty-eight hundred forty square feet, minimum lot width is fifty feet, they provide eighty-five as a minimum, lot depth, there is no requirement, but they have a hundred and four feet of depth. They meet all the set packs, uh, including rear yard, side yard, front yards, building coverage, they are less than the permitted building coverage, where you're allowed sixty percent, they are at fifty-five point eight percent. There is no requirement for lot coverage, therefore, there is no requirement for landscape coverage. In any C-zone, the, you have to follow the density requirements for the MF-zone, which is nineteen point eight dwelling units per acre, which doesn't mean you have to have two bedrooms, three bedrooms, four bedrooms, it's dwelling units. So, they meet that, they're at nineteen point seven dwelling units per acre, which equates to four units permitted at the site. So, density is not a variance. Building height, they reduced the building height to require, or to, uh, meet the requirement of thirty-four feet from the sidewalk. Parking, there is two parking elements at this location, the residential portion, the, the ordinance says you have to refer to the garden apartment-style parking to meet, for the parking requirements. In the state of New Jersey, it's residential site improvement standards, commonly known as R S I S, they require two point one spaces per, per bedrooms, which equates to eight point four residential site improvement standards, and our ordinance says if it's less than point five, you round down, so they need eight residential parking spaces, which are provided. Commercial, eighteen hundred square feet is the proposed commercial area. Our ordinance requires one space per two hundred square feet, uh, or nine spaces, so they need a total of seventeen spaces. And they provide seventeen spaces, including one ADA space, which is all that's required, is one ADA space. Documents reviewed on the next page, as, as well as the plans reviewed, again, we don't have to go through all those, they, they showed them on the display. And again, with no variances being requested, they have some homework to do, they stuff the Smith and get county approval for this. And also, with the standards along Vettner Avenue, they have to get county approval or sign off as a waiver for the non-concrete sidewalk and the lights and the trees. Again, that's another hurdle for them to go through, but that's not going to be that big of a deal. They addressed all the requirements in section one seventy-five dash twenty-six J three and one seventy-five dash twenty-six L, and all-street parking, there is no density variance, there is no C variances, so, again, they, they discuss the stormwater management, it is one hundred percent in purpose today, it's a little bit less than that proposed, and again, the stormwater runs off into the city and county storm drain system, they help into the open water. I have no further comment.
Yes.
The ordinance said this. It's my comments. We'd like to amend the application of three bedroom units, not four bedrooms. Four three-bedroom units. We'd like to amend the application and address your concerns. Thank you.
It's what they still need this important. They still need the same part. They're just making bigger rooms.
So, it's 12 bedrooms instead of 16?
If there's nothing else on the board, Leo, would you read us?
Is the board—
Pardon me? I—well, I'm sorry. I didn't say it out loud. I said, "Is there any change in the parking requirement?" There's no change in the parking requirement. I was hoping there would be less parking, and then you could have more commercial.
Is that—anything else, Chris?
Nothing.
You're gonna go with the amended application? All right. Does anyone have any questions for me before I frame the motion? I know I kind of addressed them during the course of the hearing, and you heard Rogers' report. But the amended applications for three-bedroom units, so 12 total bedrooms opposed to 16.
We're presuming they're seeking preliminary and final terms.
Yeah. I'm gonna say the motion's for preliminary and final major site plan approval as amended. There's no variances requested. There's a couple of checklist submission waivers that were outlined as number two through nine in Mr. Ballinson's letter dated today. Those are from the—
They were supported by the board.
By Mr. McLaren's board, and you gave reasons in the letter for each one, which are pretty standard. And those are from the city engineer's report. And the conditions will note the standard conditions. Subject to any conditions in Mr. McLaren's report unless otherwise addressed tonight during the course of the hearing. The applicant will reply with any representations it made during the course of the hearing. Subject to any outside approvals, which will be at least—they're gonna be required to get the county planning board approval, and just basically the standard ones. But we'll need a motion, second, and a roll call vote.
I make a motion?
I'll second it.
Richard Patterson?
Well, I think I'm gonna use the words that a member of the public said. This project has morphed from a commercial project to a residential project. I can't in good conscience think that this is a legitimate commercial project. We have approved an identical project to this. Seeing the results of that project, I have to say it's detrimental to Margate to have a 83% residential property here. And I, as—I disagree with Mr. Ballinson in the case that I think the intent of the master plan has to come into play. I was involved in three years or two years of planning with that master plan. And I don't see this as a viable commercial project, and I vote no.
Michael Cristaldi?
I don't think this goes with the intent of our master plan. I just, you know—and I'm still gonna call it three parking spaces per unit, and it's not there. I think it's overbuilding for what's there. We turned it down for a reason the last time. And I feel as though I'm gonna turn it down this time for basically almost the same reasons, so I vote no.
Jim Gallantino?
I concur with the board, and I say no.
Craig Pomisano?
I wasn't here for the vote for the Johnny's across the street from Johnny's. When you look at it on the blueprints, they—it looks like it has room to turn your cars in. But once it's built with the cantilevered over it, it really looms huge on that site. And that end of town, we did that one, and I was there for the Coolidge Avenue one. And we did vote for that, too. But this one here, I don't think it's good for Venter Avenue. I don't wanna see that end of—I don't wanna see that end of the commercial district. When I look at the buildings that are down, like castles and everywhere there, it's two stories. There are apartments above it. I mean, I know that's changing because of the net worth of all properties and the net worth of the condos that they can put there. But this project before didn't have any residents on that site. And it was 100% commercial before, and the commercial now is 1,800 square feet to 8,600 square feet or 8,300 square feet. I just—the balance is out of—it's out of whack, even though it conforms. And I don't like to be told I have to vote yes when I don't—when I'm not really in favor of a project. And I'm gonna vote no.
Remy Pelosi?
I mean, certainly, it's going to improve the appearance of what's there now. And I hope that somehow that can still be done. And I also think we really need to preserve our commercial properties. But I think it is overdevelopment, and I agree with the other board members, and I have to vote no.
Stephen Giuseppe?
Yeah, I agree. I do not feel that this reflects the intention of what the master plan was made for, and that was to retain commercial space. We have a blank slate here, and this is not doing it. I vote no.
Michael Rafiu?
I agree with the other board members. I don't think this is a viable commercial project, and I'm gonna vote no.
Michael Richmond?
So, let me get this straight. So, you said—remember you quoted, like, if there's no variances required, if it's a— It's a statute. Is that like a law?
That's law.
That's the law. So, we all voted against the law. They all voted against the law. Right.
Yeah, don't include yourself in that group.
Of course, I'd be a big yes for the project. I'm not gonna start making rules up and laws up, you know, on a whim. It's ridiculous. Next time I get stopped by a cop, I'm gonna—for, you know, going through a relay, I'm gonna fight it. Why not? Right? It's the stupidest thing I ever heard. Go ahead. I vote yes.
Would you vote yes?
Yeah.
Motion denied?
What is the vote?
I'm sorry?
What's the vote?
One in favor, seven against.
Pardon me?
One, seven.
Yeah. The motion bans one, seven, and motion denied. I can count at 87. 83. 83.
78.45.
Oh, boy, God, guess you got different numbers than you gave me. Next case is Karen Alton, 512 North Thurlow Avenue, Block 721, Lot 8, located in the S40 zoning district, seeking C-variance relief for the construction of a third-floor rear deck and possibly others in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, the report is based on the application of Karen Alton, 512 North Thurlow Avenue, Block 721, Lot 18, located in the S40 zoning district. Effective firm elevation AE9. Seeking C-variances deemed complete, somewhat of a hardship variance. Actually, it's not a hardship variance, sorry. But it's a substantial benefit variance. Background is as follows. Variances being solved for the construction of an exterior third-floor deck in the rear of the property, where third-floor decks at this location are permitted to lonely be located facing the street. Zoning chart is on page two, and there is only one variance, and that's for rear yard-facing third-floor deck on a non-waterfront, non-beachfront property. Again, rear-facing third-floor deck, whereas third-floor decks are only permitted to face the street. And again, this is—a rear yard deck has an impact on five adjacent properties versus a front yard deck has an effect on zero. Minimum distance from the deck to the rear property line is 16 feet. If the deck was in the front yard, it would be 55 feet away from the neighbor across. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, Eric Goldstein on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight is Terry Cummings to my left. She's a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I'm gonna have her sworn in in just a second. But as everybody is aware, City of Margate recently passed an ordinance allowing third-floor decks in the front of the house and set some architectural controls on the deck so that they wouldn't be basically visible from the street. It wouldn't be a large deck that hung out over the second floor, but rather it would be hidden, and the railing would be such that it would be hard to see from ground level what was going on on the deck itself. So, in that regard, we initially presented a plan, and Terry did a fairly conscientious design to make the house as— I don't wanna say unobstructive, but the house itself to fit into Margate zoning code as much as possible. But the rear of the property obviously has the views out over the bay, and the property owner wanted to take advantage of those views as much as possible. So, rather than put a third-floor deck off the front, Terry designed it off the back. The design you have in your package shows a deck with a portion of it that would be railed with what we would call the pent roof. And then there's a portion of it that would be open and either regular open decking or wire.
This—
That—the actual design, after discussing this with Mr. McLaren and trying to be a little bit more concerned about the neighbors, will be your typical pent roof across the back without any open railing. So, the rail itself—and Terry's gonna be able to describe this in a minute—will be different from what you have in your packages. So, keep that in mind when Terry's giving her testimony, because what you have doesn't necessarily match up. But in an effort to try to make the project as passable as possible, knowing that the board hadn't really done much with rear yard decks on the third floor unless the property was directly on the water, we think we've come up with a solution to this problem.
Will there be any railing at all, or just the roof?
It'll be the roof across.
So, there won't be any railing at all? The roof will come up as the edge of the deck?
Yeah. And that will be the rail. I mean, there won't be formal railing like you would see open in the picture.
Well, some pent roofs go up, and then there's a railing in public.
No, no, it's just straight across.
It's just gonna be the roof.
Knowing how important that is to the board, Terry, who's—you know, her designs are, of course, top-notch, said, "I can make this work in a way that doesn't cause a problem." That if this were in the front of the house, it would pass. We try to make this the type of deck that if it were in front, it would pass. This time, it's just off the rear. So, having said all that, Mr. Manos, could you please swear Ms. Cummings in, and I'll get her testimony on the record, please?
Sure. Ms. Cummings, just your name and business address, please.
Terry Cummings, 102 Arbor Court West in Lynnwood.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And she's—
We accept their credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. All right, Terry, we've been through the design quite a bit, and I respect a lot of time with the property owner getting to this rear yard deck. So, take us through what you've designed, the house itself a little bit, even though it needs no variances. But focus, of course, on the area in the deck that looks now on your plan better than what they have in front of them.
I don't think Eric left anything for me to say at this point. We have a lot here that today the Altons, Sandy and Karen own, and it's been in their family for, I believe, over 50 years. It's currently a two-story home that is not flood compliant. So, the decision was to take the house down and to build a new flood-compliant house with a pool in the back. Now, the lot is a really nice size. It's a large lot. But—so, with that, we were able to construct our home, meeting all the zoning requirements. And since I don't wanna take the time to list them all, except for the rear deck, we comply with setbacks, lot coverage, height, parking. We have a new grade floor level with several parking spots in the driveway and in the garage and some storage space. We have a first-floor level that is predominantly bedrooms. We have a lovely bedroom suite for Sandy that will meet universal design standards and a couple of other bedrooms.
Terry, with all the cases we have, would you just stick to the third floor?
Happy to.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, good design always strives to take advantage of any site. This particular site, the best thing that it has is the views of the water. It has some really nice views in the front, and we've taken advantage of that with some decks and some glass. But the really great views are in the back. And if you can look over some space that can't be built on off the rear, you see a magnificent view from the master suite, which is on the top floor. So, this particular—I know, but I'm gonna show it, and then I'm gonna explain. So, I think you have a picture of this, and this is showing the back decks overlooking the pool and the small rear deck off the master, which now has been redesigned. We have done away with the railing, and we have instead—I can pass a couple of these around. Done it?
Terry, Terry, when you added the pent roof, what size did that become?
I think it gets slightly smaller than it is now, which is just under 100 square feet.
Okay, it was 10 by 10, so—
Yeah, and I think it just loses a foot or so by bringing the deck all the way up to the level to make a railing height for safety reasons.
Now, does the pent roof go all the way around?
What it does is the roof around it is already existing. This has been—
So, you actually have walls, not just a pent roof on the sides?
Inside, yes. Inside the deck itself, you have straight walls that come down. That's what forms the deck. The roof itself is almost a U roof, and it goes around the deck itself.
My point is, you don't have a pent roof surrounding this deck that sticks out. You've got actually walls from the house that block each side, and then the pent roof on the front.
Correct. So, if you're on either side, Mr. Patterson, to the left is a wall, to the right is a wall, to the front is a pent roof. There's no railing, and it's pretty tucked in.
You can't see it from the sides?
You can't see it from the sides, and I would venture to say that you can't see it really from anywhere else other than the property directly beneath it or in front of it. And as Terry and I discussed, this design really prevents anyone from seeing anything from ground level up or for upper deck down. You would really only see it to look out over to the bay.
Well, we had a case where they had a fancy wall in front and said, "Well, this looks nicer." And what do you want them all look the same? The purpose of the third-floor decks is, of course, they should look the same. They should look like you can't see them.
And that's what Terry has done. Yeah.
That was the intention even from the beginning, with these two roof lines coming down, forming these walls on either side. That deck was hidden, except for the little railing in front. And now, we've redesigned it to meet with the board's approval, and that is now roofline as well, continuous roofline. You won't see anything up there.
The board's approval was for decks like that in the front of the house. Why did we say we don't want decks in the back of the house? What was the thought process?
We didn't. What was said was, if you wanted deck in the back of the house, then it would be done on a case-by-case basis. There was only five people here that night, so there wasn't much reasoning. It was—there was only five people here that night, so—I—were you here? I don't think you were here.
Eric, this is off a master bedroom, correct? Third-floor master bedroom.
That's right.
For the couples.
It's not gonna be a party deck. It's not gonna be—
Not at all.
Off the kitchen and have your coffee. It's off the—
Sunset views and—
That's pretty much it. And there are decks on the next two levels down, so, you know, there's— The only access out of the house for either emergency personnel or for anyone who just wants to enjoy themselves up top there.
So, there is a rear deck on the floor below also?
Correct.
But that's second floor. That's not a—
What's the difference?
Right.
10 feet.
10 feet further away.
We would—you know, I know you have a long agenda, of course.
Well, I—let me just—I wanted to see this from—I wanted to see the reverse view here, so I went actually out on the bay on a boat and looked. It overlooks a lot that can't be built on, and it goes through a wide area between two houses. So, I don't see it much having much effect on it.
Exactly, which was the intention of it in the beginning.
It's not like you're right up against another house.
Right.
And as far as Mr. Pomisano with a second-floor deck, you've got a better peak, being Tom view, from the second floor than you do the third floor.
So, we would rest preliminarily, obviously subject to recall, Terry, depending on what the public has to say. But we think this is meeting the intent of the ordinance. It's kind of subtle, but it's just one more thing off the master that the property owner wants to build. And we would, you know, say that we've satisfied. I have to ask you, Terry, of course, in your professional opinion, as a licensed architect in the state, do you find any negatives associated with the design that you prepared for the third-floor deck?
Silly question, but no, I do not find any negatives, only positives.
To the extent that someone could conceivably— To the extent that someone could conceivably say there's a negative here, would the positives greatly outweigh any such negatives? Mr. Patterson, I think we've satisfied the standard of the C variance. We would rest, subject again to recalling Terry if someone has a question.
What is the positive?
Light air and open space. You've got the ability for a first responder to get in and out, extra ingress and egress, architectural design, pretty much. And the house itself, of course, is flood compliant, so I think, you know, the MLUL is satisfied here with those positives.
The one positive is the exit point at the top of the house.
You know, hopefully, God forbid, there's a fire.
Which you're permitted to have in the front.
Other than, other than hanging out a window.
Right. So.
So who's gonna haul a ladder back there, Greg?
Done it many times. Done it many, many times. Tight alleys.
Anything else from the board? Anyone here from the public have any comments? Public portions closed. Leo, please read a motion.
Okay, it's just a C variance application for a one-C variance. That's to allow a third-floor deck, a third-floor rear deck where such decks are not permitted. And then I'll just note the standard conditions that we note in every, every approval that we, every motion that we make.
Make a motion.
Richard Patterson?
When we voted on only front yard decks on the third floor, there was much debate. I think there was only five people here. And it was stated at that time, because I believe there was, there was audience participation wanting to get the bay views, was you can always come in for a variance on a case-by-case basis. And when I first looked at this plan with that railing there, I thought this doesn't even meet front yard requirements, let alone backyard. But I think what you've done, this is so hidden, and there's such a nice unobstructed view there that doesn't bother anybody, I have to vote yes on this.
Michael Cristaldi?
By the state, I can now call this a fourth-floor deck. And you did a great job designing this, and I approve.
Thank you. Jim Gallantino?
Hey, Greg. This way you get the people off the deck in case there's a fire, right?
Yeah, right.
All right, I vote yes.
Craig Pomisano?
I will always vote for a deck on the top floor. That's where the heat and smoke accumulates. So I was a career firefighter, if anybody wanted to know. And the name of my boat after 35 years is Firescape.
Remy Pelosi?
I agree with the other board members and vote yes.
Stephen Giuseppe?
I don't necessarily like the third-floor decks, especially in the backyard, because just recently in my house, I'm so close to my rear neighbors. It's very creepy when I look out the window now, and to have somebody standing on the deck looking at me is even creepier. Mr. Pomisano convinced me that third-floor decks are good for that fire escape, and I can see them in the front. So I would prefer it in the front. I'm gonna vote no.
Michael Rafiu?
I agree with the other members. I think, I think you did a great job on this third-floor deck. I'm gonna vote yes.
Michael Richmond?
You're gonna vote yes.
Motion approved, seven to one.
Yes.
We're gonna take a two-minute break?
Five minutes, Greg.
We're back in session? You on? Okay. Everybody's here. Next case, Brian and Dana Hiltoner, 426 North Quincy Avenue, block 618, lot 31, located in S40 zoning district, seeking C variance relief for the construction of a third-floor rear deck and possibly others at the existing single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren said his report's gonna be the same as it was for the last one's. I'll just explain the variance. Oh, okay. At this location, rear-yard-facing decks are not permitted and one is proposed. There we go. Mr. Goldstein.
Okay. So a couple of things, and I know, again, you don't wanna hear about the whole house itself, because the house itself in general meets all zoning requirements. But in designing the house, because they did want a third-floor deck, the Hiltoners were, in a very particular way, wanting to give back as much as they could with regard to the house. So Roger's report, we deem it to be accurate, most importantly, has a front landscaping of 71 percent, where 60 is required, and four spaces for parking where three are required. Now, this area of town doesn't really have too much of a parking problem, but in general, they're doing as much as they can to give back while at the same time asking for the variance for the third-floor deck. This deck is really built into the house. I didn't even see it when I first saw the plan, how much it's cut into the third floor. So what you have here is a deck that's hidden. You definitely can't see this at all from the ground level, but more importantly, they don't have a rear second and first-level deck other than what's on the side. So the rear of the house doesn't have any other area to look out. It's just one area built in with roofs on both sides, and then the deck itself is built in. The picture's a good representation, and when I saw this first rendering that Brian and Dana gave me, I said, "Where's the deck? It's not on the plan." So understanding that, we still need to put the positive and negative criteria on. Tom Baglevo is with me, licensed professional architect. If Mr. Manos could swear him in. We're not gonna discuss the house, Mr. Chairman, just the deck? Okay.
Can I ask one question? Is there a third-floor deck on the front?
There is not.
All right.
All right. Mr. Baglevo, just your name and business address for the record. I'll get you sworn in.
Tom Spicklevo, 472 Norris Town Road, Ziegler P.A.
Okay, and please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you'll give tonight will be the truth?
Yes.
And Mr. Baglevo's been here on several occasions.
Yeah, we accept his qualifications.
Tom, we know that the board is significantly busy, so they have your plan, they have your rendering. I'm certainly aware based on the prior case, but every case has to be heard on its own merits.
Right.
Just walk us through the way you designed the deck, how it's hidden up on the third floor. The board obviously knows there aren't any decks in the rear on the first or second floor, but it's something to be included on the record if we do so.
The drawing set that you currently have is the exhibit. If you go to either the rendering or Z1.2, the deck is off the sitting room in the center. Obviously, there's a bedroom and a bedroom with roofs coming down on both sides. Three sides of the deck are cradled by the house, roofs on both sides and the actual house on the back side. The front side has a roof that comes up, but is, has some railing sticking up, I would say about 18 inches or a foot. In the front? Back. Everything is on the back.
Yes.
Yep, everything's in the back. And then if you go to the elevation, it's indicated that the deck is across the back between the two roof structures. The deck face of the wall behind it is further back than both roof structures. The front rail of the deck is further back than both structures on both sides. So from the side, the deck's not visible at all because it's beyond the plane of the envelope of the two bedroom structures.
Tom?
Oh, you can say it. Maybe I was talking-
You can say.
Anybody hear all that?
I heard you, Mr. Giuseppe. I told him to speak up.
And that's about, I mean, that's about it regarding the deck.
Tom, obviously you designed the property. You wanted to make the house fit in as much as possible, but we do need a variance for the third-floor deck. In your professional opinion as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, do you see any, excuse me, negatives that could be associated with design if the board grants this?
No. Not at all.
To the extent someone could conceivably say there's a negative to be associated with this, with the positives of the deck built in the way it is, along with the house being over in landscaping and over in parking, along with not having a second or first-floor deck in the rear, would those positives greatly outweigh any negatives?
One, board, would you be quiet, please? Members of the board, please be quiet while he's speaking. I'm sorry, Eric, I didn't hear what you said.
Listen, we're busy, Mike. Get this done. Tom, you testified to the positive criteria, that the positives of what you've designed greatly outweigh any such negatives, to the extent someone conceivably say that there is a negative.
Agreed. That specifically the plane of the deck further back than both structures on both sides, really, it's only visible from the elevation of the deck versus down it.
Does this picture, is this the same as the plans or did you modify the plans to-
No, it's the same. This is it.
It is. Roger seems to think that there's a difference between this and-
The floor plan's the same.
No, 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 the back.
The draw.
The roof lines?
The roof lines are slightly different in the, in the right. Than the prince? Yes.
You have a gambrel roof on the prince.
Say it again, Roger. I'm sorry.
You have a gambrel roof on the prince and not on the rendering.
Which, which is it? Is it this or the prince? The gambrel roof or these roofs? No, you're not sworn in. Swear him in.
Why don't we have a-
Just tell him and he can say it.
Mr. Hilton can get sworn in by Mr. Manos.
All right. Brian, just your name and address for the record, please.
Brian Hiltoner, 428 North Pembroke Avenue, Margie.
And do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
So the, the design that Tom has, has the gambrel roofs on the, on the rear side of the property, which was based on a recommendation by Mr. McLaren to make it conform to code, so we didn't need to ask for any other variances or anything to make sure we fit the E5 requirements. That was the original rendering that was put together based on the original plans before we had a chance to speak with Mr. McLaren.
Well, that was my question, so that's-
That was the original rendering, but we just brought it-
That's what your application is, what's shown there.
What Tom has here is the, that's what-
That's what you're applying for tonight.
Yes, that's what's going to be built, yep. Not this. That was the original home, but it'll just show you the deck basically set into the house. We thought it was like a visual representation would help.
Tom, is the deck any less hidden in this picture than that picture?
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry.
Pay attention when I talk. Is the deck any more or less hidden in this rendering than that rendering, or is it the same?
It's probably more hidden here because the structure, the storage room took over-
Well, that's what we need to know.
Yeah.
We have had people come in and then they build something that's not what we saw, so.
It's more hidden here because the storage room, we've roofed the storage room, it actually gave it more enclosure than here, even though you can barely see it here.
I just need to know more or less, so that's fine.
So when you, when you build the house, that's what it's about, okay?
The, the deck was also made smaller from what you see in the renderings to what Tom's plan is now, based on recommendations.
Got it.
If you can imagine, this roof line's gonna gambrel straight down, and then the siding's gonna go away. And that's what you actually see. And, oh, we didn't do a section. But the gambrel, you're gonna see the side of that roof there, you're not gonna see-
I just don't wanna be misled by this rendering, and I, and you've answered the question, that that's even more hidden than what this is.
I would say Tom did a good job blending the roofing with this project.
Thank you.
We would rest, Mr. Patterson, of course, with the ability to call Mr. Baglevo again to the extent a member of the public or a board member had questions, but otherwise we would rest on the merits establishing the C variance criteria for a rear-yard deck and turn it over to you.
Anyone here from the public have any comments, questions? Public portions closed. Leo, would you read a motion?
Sure. Just the one-C variance to allow the third-floor rear deck where they're not technically allowed under the ordinance. And then again, just the, the standard conditions that we put in every, every resolution. Just a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
I make a motion.
Second. Richard Patterson?
Well, for the same reason as the, no, I won't even say that. I, if, if, on a case-by-case basis, if we are going to have or allow a third-floor deck, I think that this is hidden even more than, than the last one. And again, I feel you have a less intrusive sightline from 40 feet in the air than you do from 30 feet in the air. But I would also like to say this just for the record. For anyone else coming in, I, I don't wanna open the floodgates for rear third-floor decks that if anyone wants a third-floor deck, they better make damn sure that it is well hidden, and these two can be an example, that you don't even know the third-floor deck is up there, just for the record of anyone listening to this or reading the transcript. Therefore, I vote yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
I agree with Mr. Patterson. I vote yes, and I think you did a great job on tucking this one in.
Jim Gallantino?
Is that Bryce Harper's home run during the World Series on the TV? Anthony? I remember that. Just for that alone, I vote yes.
Craig Pomisano?
For all the reasons I stated previous application, I vote yes.
Remy Pelosi?
I concur with the other board members and vote yes.
Stephen Giuseppe?
For the same reason I said on the last case, I vote no.
Michael Rafiu?
I don't have anything to add. It's a beautiful home, guys. I'm a, I'm a yes.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I vote yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, seven to one.
Next case is Judith Creed, 354 Rumson Avenue, block 617, lot 7, located in the S40 zoning district, seeking, seeking C variance relief for front yard porch setback, front yard landscape coverage, total landscape coverage, and possibly others in order to construct a new first-level, oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm thinking of a different case. 354 Rumson Avenue, block 617, lot 7, located in the S40 zoning district, seeking C variance relief for front yard porch setback, front yard landscape coverage, total landscape coverage, and possibly others in order to construct a new first-level porch adorned with a covered roof at the existing single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. It's the application to Judith Creed, 354 North Rumson Avenue, block 619, lot 7, located in its own S40WF, which stands for waterfront, effective from elevation nine. Seeking C variance relief, planning and zoning report deemed complete. It's a hardship variance in regard that part of the property is we're repairing, part of its uplands, and of course, the uplands portion governs an amount to, based on the zoning background, as follows, as Rich indicated. The variance is being sought for the expansion of a conforming front yard porch into a non-conforming front yard porch. The porch expansion also creates an additional variance for existing non-conforming landscape coverage of total and front yards, as can be expected. Documents reviewed are page three of the report plus in the application itself. So the three variances are as follows. Front yard setback to porch, whereas 9.62 feet is a front yard porch setback based on prevailing setbacks, 9 feet exists and 6.9 feet is proposed, 6.9, 6 feet is proposed. For a porch experience, expansion requiring a variance, it's an expansion of a non-conforming setback. Front yard landscape coverage, whereas a minimum required landscape coverage per front yard is 60 percent, which may be reduced to 50 percent due to stairs, but not in this case. About 55.2 percent exists and 49 percent is proposed. And of course, if front yard landscape coverage goes down, total landscape coverage goes down. And of course, if front yard landscape coverage goes down, total landscape coverage goes down. Thirty-five percent is required, nineteen point five percent exists, and eighteen point three percent is proposed. No waivers have been requested other than a front area map within two hundred, uh, two hundred feet. I recommended that waiver be granted. Again, in nineteen, or in 2011, the property received permission to install a new bulkhead, twenty-four inches of waterware to the bulkhead. Same property came in front of the zoning board in 2002 and got relieved for front yard setback to the porch and house expansion, so they were coming in again to expand the porch a little bit further, closer to the street. The property has a very large waterfront wooden deck that covers the entire rear yard, and the property has a detached as well as an attached garage. Very little landscaping exists, so it's being further reduced, and waterfront property already gets a higher allowable building coverage than all other single-family properties, fifty percent versus thirty to forty percent.
Is this one fifty percent, or it's just allowed fifty percent?
It's allowed fifty percent. Actually, the building coverage is probably higher. Nah, actually, you're at forty-four point two.
Forty-four point two.
Building coverage, so, just a lot of, not too much landscaping.
Right.
And that concludes my report at this time.
Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Eric Goldstein on behalf of the applicant, Judith Creed. Mrs. Creed is here with me, along with John Barnhart, who will testify on behalf of the project as a licensed professional planner and engineer. I think John has a good exhibit with the small amount of expansion that is being proposed, so I would ask Mr. Manos to please swear him in and walk us through the proposed plan of development.
Okay, Mr. Barnhart, your name and business address, please.
John Barnhart, 400 North Dover Avenue, Atlantic City.
And do you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Patterson, I would ask Mr. Barnhart to accept as expert. Planning and engineering. Thank you. All right, John, if you could just walk us through, we've been talking about this for quite a while when we were on the agenda last month, and you've just been patiently waiting, so we're on, so tell us about what you would like to do and how we can satisfy the board.
Sure. So, what Mrs. Creed is trying to accomplish here is to have a little outdoor seating area on the front of her property. She currently tries to sit out on the little, on the little landing that's there, so she can talk to her neighbors as they go by and, 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 and just enjoy her community. It's just, just not big enough to actually have a, a nice relaxing area out front. Albeit, there is a lot going on in the property, we don't deny that, but the, the request, we think, is very minor. It's a six-by-ten porch area. It does require front yard setback variance, as mentioned by Eric, and it does slightly reduce the front yard landscape coverage and the overall landscape coverage. So, the three variances are necessary. I think this is, this is the type of cases more about what are the negative impacts of something like this, and in this specific case, because this is a property that was renovated and kept in very great, very, very good condition, pre-sandy and pre, pre all the elevation changes, this building has a very low profile to it. So, that porch that is, that Mrs. Creed proposes is only three risers up from the, from, from the sidewalk, so this is not an expansion of a porch that's up at flood elevation, that's, you know, eight, nine, ten feet in the air, that's sticking out into the front yard, becomes very obtrusive. It's low to the ground. I will have a nice, nicely done little railing around it. Mrs. Creed proposes to put some new landscaping in front of it, and actually even to save and preserve the existing landscaping. There's a beautiful tree at that location, they're gonna relocate to the other side of the property. This is a case of, we believe this is a very committedness request. We don't think it has any negative impact on the adjacent properties. And given the redevelopment of Rumson Avenue, as I'm sure you're aware, you know, just past Mrs. Creed, there are three, very close to brand-new homes, very large homes, meeting all the current flood standards. My opinion, they're much more obtrusive on the front yard because of their height and stature as compared to what Mrs. Creed proposes. So, for all those reasons, we believe that this is a, a request that is able to be granted under both the C-one and the C-two criteria, and that the negative impacts are so minor that we believe that it's an appropriate request.
The fact that the negative impacts are minor, of course, is important. We've established that. Would you say that the positive impacts are just so much better, based upon the streetscape, based upon the ability of Mrs. Creed to go out in the front porch and actually talk to her neighbors, that the granting of this variance benefits would greatly outweigh any other prospective negatives?
Yeah, we believe it provides a more desirable visual environment by improve, by improving the front, front yard with the new porch. It, it creates a, a new more sense of, of community for Mrs. Creed to be able to have a, a spot to sit on the, at the front of her, of her home.
Patterson, I think the board members are familiar with this project, and it's, again, as John said, fairly de minimis, but of course, will take questions if the board members have them, but we think Mr. Barnhart's testimony is enough for now to put this to.
Any questions from the board? Anyone here from the public have any comments or questions? Public portion, did I hear? Public portion's closed. Mr. Manos, please read a motion.
Okay, it's a C-variance application to allow this porch, front porch expansion, approximately six by ten. The variances required are front yard setback to the porch, nine point six two feet required, six point nine six is proposed, and then front yard landscaping coverage is slightly reduced, so sixty's required, and they're approximately forty-nine percent, and then same thing with total landscaping coverage, thirty-five percent's required, and they're down to about eighteen point three percent. The conditions, Roger, did you mention a waiver? The area map waiver, we'll add, um, and then the conditions, we'll just note the standard conditions, anything in Mr. McLaren's report unless otherwise addressed, any representations made during the course of the hearing, subject to any outside approvals.
I make a motion.
Richard Patterson?
Well, this board, Mr. Giuseppe in particular, I think the second, is very concerned with losing green areas and green space and landscaping and whatever. As a percentage, because it's so small, the percentage seems higher. But looking at this case individually, I have always felt that the fact to have, and it's so, such a small, that two people could sit on it, so you could have one neighbor at a time, that'll be a restriction, so. To promote neighborliness, communication among neighbors, Republicans and Democrats, everyone can meet on your porch. I think that outweighs the small, even though percentage-wise it's big, but in actual numbers, it's small. I think in this case, it outweighs it. The fact that you're losing some landscaping. For that reason, in this case, I vote yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
Well, Mr. Patterson didn't leave me anything to say, so I vote yes. I think it's a good project.
Jimmy Galantino?
I don't know. Mr. Patterson's winded explanation of a great application, I think is a great move. I think this will be an asset to the neighborhood. I approve.
Anything we can do to make this meeting longer, Mr. Patterson?
Craig Palmisano?
Yeah, it's, everybody would like to have a front porch, I'm sure, and I, I know the house well, and the landscaping coverage is one percent less. It, not a big deal. I approve.
Remy Pelosi?
I concur with the other board members and approve.
Stephen Giuseppe?
I'd like to elaborate what Mr. Patterson said. I definitely feel that the landscape is extremely important in this small town that we, the landscaping that we have anymore, but I will approve because I think the porch is nice and it's very de minimis.
Michael Rafiu?
I agree with the, with the chairman on this one, in the interest of increasing political discourse. I'm, I'm gonna vote yes on this.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Palmisano and the rest of the board members. I would vote yes.
Motion carries eight, affirmative, zero, and then negative.
Thank you. Next case is Esther and Mark Kaplan, 20 Cedar Grove Avenue, block 124, lot 218, located in the S-60 zoning district, seeking C-variance relief for fence location in the front yard, and possibly others, in the order to extend the fence on the right side of the home and relocate the steps from the right side of the home into the side yard. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I did not write a report for this application. There's not much to it, but they are seeking a variance for, to construct a fence in the front yard versus where front yard fences are not permitted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLaren, ladies and gentlemen, Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicants, Mark and Esther Kaplan, who I left. Just to echo a couple of things Mr. McLaren said. Mr. Barnhart's gonna testify in just a second, but as part of the application, there is the fence that's gonna be moved out as a proposed fence, more towards Cedar Grove Avenue, and it's a small portion on the left side from what John is preparing, actually on the right side of the house. There are some impervious paving stepping stones on the right side that are completely coming out, that's gonna add to the landscape coverage to mitigate, but most importantly, the fence itself as proposed is going to be seventy-five percent open. It will be a open fence to see-through. It will be landscaped both in front and behind, and the purpose of revising the property is really just to make it more accessible once again, to have a better set of steps on one side of the house. Having said that, John, I'd ask you to please get sworn in once again and testify after what we just discussed.
So, one quick question, Eric. And, and John, I guess, get sworn in first, and I'll ask John a question.
John, just real quick, your name and address.
John Barnhart, 400 North Dover Avenue, Atlantic City, New Jersey.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
We have to say he's okay, then?
Um, I would ask that you just accept this.
Okay, we accept this credentials again, yes.
Thank you.
So, you, you do need a variance for total landscaping of point three percent, because you can't mitigate that point three percent? Looking at the variance plot plan, it says, uh, you need a variance for total landscaping. You don't meet it now, twenty-three point five percent, and you're going down to twenty-three point two percent. So, we can't mitigate that point three percent? Somewhere?
Yes, we will mitigate.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. McLaren, and, um, oh, I guess John can testify.
Sure. So, um, again, I, you know, this is, this is one of those applications, while this is very important to them, we believe that the minor request, albeit, I rec, I recognize from many, many applications, the sensitivity with regard to fences in the community. This is a case, we believe, that stands on its own, does not, does not, is not precedent-setting, as it has, and any case is not precedent-setting, but we think that what they request here makes a lot of sense, and works with it, with our, with our neighboring property, and does not create any negatives. So, all, all that our client is proposing to do is they have an existing open, it's a white, white open picket fence. It's a five-foot fence that runs from the side property line to the home, and which, which creates the front enclosure of their pool area. Their neighbor has a solid six-foot fence, white, white, solid fence, that goes up, that goes up here and then turns back to the house.
It's an awful fence. The neighboring fence is not good.
The, 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 if you, if you visit this property, I'm sure you, I'm sure you saw the landscaping in the front of the property is absolutely magnificent. What they're proposing to do is just to create a slightly larger patio. If you actually looked over the fence, you could see their lounge chairs, that are, they're kind of tight up against where the pool is and the, and the pool cover, a slightly larger patio to be able to, to be able to fit their lounge chairs, and what they're proposing to do is just to come in line with their home and also the neighboring fence, with, with their five-foot fence, but again, it's an open five-foot fence, it's not, it's not a solid fence, and it's not six feet, and then redo the landscaping in front of that, in keeping with what they have, with, with the beautiful landscaping that they have there now. There would be a slight increase in, in impervious coverage with regard to the patio, and then, as Eric mentioned, there's, there's stepping stone pavers alongside the home that will be removed, and we will, you know, do a slight reduction in some of the concrete to get to a point where we have no increase in impervious coverage with regard to the application. So, the variance is, is to be, is to be able to slide that fence forward.
How many feet forward?
Uh, it is, oh, we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna be setback fifteen feet from the front property line to the proposed location of the fence, and I would, I would say it's, uh, the existing fence is probably five feet further back, so the existing fence is probably at twenty right now.
And you want that fence to be outside of their front porch, correct?
It's essentially.
Outside.
It's even with.
Well, the neighbor's fence comes out farther than their front porch where they.
A little bit.
Yeah, so it would be out, if it matches, if it matched the neighbor's fence, it would be out past their own porch.
Slightly yes.
The ordinance says, don't come out past the house. They want to come out past the porch, correct? Yes.
The answer would be yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
And just to be clear, you're Palmisano, the proposed fence is going to line up exactly with the neighbor's fence, so you're gonna have the, the neighbor's fence, which is respectively an opaque, white vinyl.
Oh, I, yeah, I, yeah.
And their fence is going to be an open seventy-five percent wide-open fence, which won't have any views being blocked, and they're going to landscape as their other landscaping is.
Problem is, on this beautiful street, next door, this, this solid fence is the only one that comes to a front of a house. When you drive down the street, every, every house has a fence halfway back the alley, or the alley is clear all the way. When you drive up and down, it's one of the most beautiful streets in Margie. All right, and the fence next door to you is horrendous, and, but you want to come out to equal their fence, which puts you out not past the house, not past the, you come out past the porch. That's like two steps out to me. Okay? That's my point on, on this particular project. To get more room inside the pool area, is that correct? For chairs and. Step, step.
You can't talk.
Well, let's, let's, let's get sworn in. I mean, we're gonna, would you like me to be sworn in, Mr. Chairman?
So, how do you get to the pool now? There's a door in the back of the property, correct, to get to the pool?
Craig, don't, Craig, they can't talk.
I forgot, okay.
Come on in and get sworn in.
All right. Uh, Mr. Kaplan, just state your name for the record, please.
Mark Kaplan.
Uh, please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I wasn't yelling at you. Now you can talk, sir.
He was yelling at me. He was yelling at me. So, the door in the back of the property is how you get to the pool?
You gotta go through our house, down, and then through the garage. It's gotta go all the way around.
Yes, okay.
And, so.
It's not convenient.
No, it's not. In fact, I fell and I had to have my hip replaced because of it.
Uh, that's true, I'm sorry.
Good. All, all we're trying to do is line it up on the front, so we can put.
That's, that's, that really goes way past our ordinance, but.
So, the reason to extend the fence has more to do with, are you saying it has more to do with having stair access than, than getting extra room?
No, it's both.
It's both, okay.
We wanted to get, we wanted to get more room, and while we're doing it, I wanted to get steps out the front, so we don't have to go all the way back through the house and round and through the garage.
But you could also have steps out the front that turn and go right in and leave the fence where it is, so, yeah, I mean, there's an alternative to walking through the garage.
True, there's always an alternative, though.
Well, I wanted to bring that up, that we're not this poor man with a new hip that has to traverse the area where he broke his hip. There, there's other alternatives.
Um, Mr. Palmisano?
Right.
As usual, you know, the clients are here, that's good. They always take what people say into consideration. They would pull it back to line up, not be forward of the porch, so that it doesn't go further out than, and you talk about the house ends, and then you go to the porch, and you're only allowed to have it at the edge of the house. The applicants obviously heard what you said and would pull it back in to just match up with their porch. It'll be behind now, the neighbor's fence, still open, still everything they were going to do before, but this way, it won't go out further past the front porch of their house. It won't exceed any additional room into their front yard setback. Still seventy-five percent open, and we believe that the porch itself will certainly look much better. No? Oh. Well, regardless, the, the, the request would be just to have it lined up with the front of the porch and not be out any further. But one thing that John said, they do have a pool, so we do want that to be a six-foot-high fence, which we don't need a variance for. No, but there's a pool.
No, they're allowed five or six.
No, I think they'd like to go to six. You want to go to six or five?
It, it, yeah, it doesn't change to any variance, so it, whatever they're, but you intend to put a six-foot fence in instead of five or five foot?
We're gonna go with, the application has submitted, open fence, based on Mr. Palmisano's comment, we understand, of course, we're gonna pull it back so it lines up with the front of the porch and won't be out any further, and based upon Mr. McLaren's recommendation, find that additional point three or seven, or whatever the number was, Roger.
You'll just comply?
Will comply with landscaping, so it's a request, as John testified, to come out, front of the porch, the new stairs, and then this is gone, and we'll comply with landscaping. So, we talked about, you know, the give and take, obviously, nothing is given easily, and their response, obviously, the Kaplan's response is, to get rid of something, to get what they want, is their.
You just said you're putting shrubs in front of the fence, correct?
If you would like it, yeah.
No, so you're testifying there will be shrubs in front of the fence, yes.
We thought that's what you wanted.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
We do, I'm asking, right? Confirming.
There's just one thing, there's a gate there now. They proposed that the gate would stay as well, so there won't be shrubs in front of the gate, obviously. But the rest of the fence would have shrubs in front of it. Just want to be clear.
Very clear.
Just to be clear.
Mrs. Kaplan's a big fan of a local landscaper in town. He does terrific work, and he'll be the one to do the, it's not who you think.
Does it begin with a K?
No.
Just to be clear.
Blue lettering.
Just to be clear to the board and everybody else, the ordinance calls for no fences past the front of the house, correct?
Correct.
And you want us to grant a variance for one that goes past the front of the house to the front porch?
Correct.
Yes, that's in the application. Could we move on? Are you done, Mr.?
Well, we'd like to have some board comment. I mean, I kind of think we've reached a resolution where the Kaplans are willing to give back, but want to make sure that there's nothing else you would want in a resolution, so we'll, you know. The fence being seventy-five percent open, and we certainly understand that when you go down the street, the neighbor's fence is kind of difficult to deal with, and the fact that it just happens to be next door shouldn't be a detriment to the Kaplans. They're just trying to give themselves a little bit more room. If the neighbor didn't have a fence, it probably wouldn't even be an issue, but we get it. I've been by that house a number of times, too. And that big white vinyl fence is exactly what we don't want to see, which is why the Kaplans are proposing it to be seventy-five percent open.
Okay.
Lot of landscaping that should satisfy, you know, the board members, the landscaping there now is significant, and we'll comply with all the other landscaping based upon the mitigation of some concrete.
Good.
You okay?
I would rest.
Anyone here from the public have any comments or questions? Public portions closed. Leo, would you read a motion, please?
Okay, I have one C variance, that's to allow the fence in the front yard. The conditions I noted, they'll pull it back so it's even with the front of the porch. They're going to comply with the landscaping requirements. They'll put shrubs in front of the fence, obviously not in front of the gate. And the fence is going to be seventy-five percent open, and then the standard conditions we put in every other, every resolution.
I make a motion?
Richard Patterson?
Well, at Mr. Pomisano's recommendation, I rode up and down that street. I walked up and down the street. I looked at every yard. The fence that exists there now, out front, is a disgrace to that neighborhood. As small as your fence may be, it accentuates their fence. You're now going to have two houses in a row connected, even though it's set back a couple inches to meet the front porch. I don't like any incursions in the front yard. I don't see an exception here. And again, I think it accentuates the bad fence next door, even though it's legal, but we have to live with it, so I vote no.
Michael Cristaldi?
I actually come, I'm probably one of the worst on a front yard fence. I mean, I just can't take it. But I think what you're doing is going to be an improvement. Maybe the neighbor will pick up on it and tear that thing down. We'll get lucky and get a good storm. And the way your place is shrubbed, I'm okay with it. I vote yes on it. I did come in here to vote no on that, but I am changed with you moving it back because of, Craig?
Thank you.
I vote yes.
Jim Galantino?
I kind of think it's the nature of that street, as strange as it is, the houses, some are back, some are front, some are older, some... A lot of them are not that old anymore. And I kind of think the fences will match each other, and I agree with Mike. I think it'll help get that area to look better than it already does, so I vote yes.
Craig Pomisano?
I think the fence looks fine as it is right now, and I, no way will I approve a fence to come out past the front of the house. Fences are a big problem in Margate, illegal ones and legal ones. We have a legal one right next door to you that's a big problem. We have one on Atlantic Avenue down there. It's a big problem. The utility. I don't want to see, it's, it's not a hardship. The pool was there, yet the size of the pool is built to what it was. And you want to move the fence out so you can have more room in there and access a little better, but this way it was designed, and that's it. I think you have to live with it. I don't want to see a fence come out past the front of the house ever in Margate. I vote no.
Remy Pelosi?
I'm going to have to concur with Craig on this, so I vote no.
Stephen Giuseppe?
We have a problem with fences.
Would the board please be quiet while he's voting? I'm going to eject both of you.
Thank you.
Not you.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to go with, I'm going to vote no on this, because of...
Give a reason. He voted, it's...
Yeah. I just agree with what Mike says and what Rich says about the...
Craig.
Craig.
You agree with Craig and Rich, correct?
Yes.
Not Mike and Rich?
Craig and Rich.
So, you vote no?
No. Yes.
Very clear, Mr. Giuseppe.
Thank you.
Michael Raffiu?
I agree with Craig and Rich. I can't vote yes on these front yard fences. I'm going to vote no.
Michael Richmond?
So, are the stairs a variance?
No.
No. So, you'll still be able to put the stairs in, right? And then you can, you can, you can come down the stairs and then go through the gate and get into the pool without having the extension of the fence? Is that correct?
Where you can put a landing in the stairs towards the back.
You know, I guess that I don't really see a good enough reason to allow the extension somewhere.
Just for clarification for the record, because not everybody put a reason on, is the reason because of the neighbor's property or this property? Some of you are upset about the neighbor's property, so...
What we're saying is this property, what I said was, this property accentuates the neighbor's property, and it should not extend past the house. So, the reason is extends past the house.
You know, variance is usually for a hardship, and I don't see why, I don't see the hardship.
Well, it also could be because...
Well, we already voted. I think it's not time for the next case. I mean, it's...
Motion? Motion denied, six in the negative, two in the affirmative.
Next case, Keith and Karen Kaplan, 102 South Earllo Avenue, block 21, lot 10.02, located in the S-40 zoning district, seeking C variances relief for left-side yard setback, minimum lot coverage, and possibly others for the renovation of the existing single-family home. Taxes and water payment are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. The report is based on the application of Keith and Karen Kaplan, 102 South Earllo Avenue, block 21, lot 10.02, located in the S-40 zoning district. FEMA Zone AE elevation 10, meaning the bottom of the floor is a minimum, has to be 15, top of floor, minimum 14. C variances, this is a substantial benefit variance. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate to elevate an existing newly non-flood compliant home high enough to provide parking below the designed flood elevation, which is a permitted use by FEMA and NJDEP, plus add an exterior elevator shaft and a small...
Could you take your conversations outside, please? Mr. Barnhart?
In order to comply with the parking allowance below the structure, the existing detached garage will be removed. Two variances have been identified, and this is not a hardship variance, but it is a substantial benefit variance. Page two is the zoning chart for this property. Minimum required lot area is 4,000 square feet, which they meet. The zone, the use is a single-family use, which they meet. Principal structure below BFE, it's not permitted, existing not conforming. They're proposed to elevate it to be conforming. Lot width is 50 feet, which meets a minimum, and the variances are as follows. Based on the documents reviewed, minimum side yard setback, principal structure on the left side, whereas a minimum side yard setback is eight feet. 10.5 feet exists, and 4.5 feet is proposed just at the proposed elevator, so just for the width of the elevator. And again, most likely, when one side yard setback is not being met, the combined side yard setbacks are affected. In this case, that is true. Whereas a minimum combined side yard setback is 18.5 feet, 18.5 feet exists, and 12.5 feet is proposed just at the proposed elevator. And principal building coverage, whereas the maximum permitted principal building coverage is 35 percent. 33.4 percent exists, and 36.1 percent is proposed. Again, that is due to the elevator addition. And one waiver is a copy of an area map showing all lots within 200 feet. I recommend that that waiver be granted, and it has no impact on the property or the application. And again, if this is a straight house lift without the elevator shaft and the small addition, this would be by right. I could sign off tomorrow. All landscape requirements shall be met, meaning the number of shrubs, street, no street trees are required at this location. And again, this is a house lift, and I turn it over to the applicant at this time.
And just, Eric, just for the record, Remy Pelosi left, so, but we have seven members, all good.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren, Mr. Patterson, Eric Olson on behalf of the applicants, Keith and Karen Kaplan. We do concur with Roger's report. This is a house lift to meet or exceed FEMA and Margate's base flood ordinance and statute. Terry Cummings designed this lift, where we do need a setback, but it's only for the area at the proposed elevator. Now that the house is going up, pretty important to have the ability to get up and down without using so many steps. We believe that based upon public safety, health, and welfare, as well as Terry's design and the light air and open space, that this project in and of itself, as Roger said, if it weren't for a couple of minor deviations, would be by right. But we do need variances, so Terry's with me, of course. Again, I'd ask Mr. Maddox to swear her in and walk through the plan.
Okay, Ms. Cummings, just your name and address for the record.
Terry Cummings, 102 Arbor Court West, Linwood, New Jersey.
Thanks, and please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about, you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
We accept her qualification.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. All right, Terry, obviously, you've read Mr. McLaren's report. We concur with that. We discussed it. Keith and Karen had given you some direction on raising this house, beautiful beach block property, but it was not flood compliant, and now it will be, which is a substantial benefit, of course, for the city as well as for the Kaplans. So, walk us through the plan, paying particular note, of course, to the three variances that were requested.
Well, actually, this is a house I designed for both Keith and Karen about eight years ago. So, I designed the original house, which at the time was flood compliant at that time. Since then, the flood plain has raised, and they want to make it flood compliant again. They also want to have better use of their backyard. We currently have a detached garage that takes up this back corner. We are going to demolish the garage, and we have four parking spaces. We're going to keep our four parking spaces, which is one more than we need, by putting two inside the garage and two in the front. And by raising the house, making it flood compliant, they do use this house six months out of the year. It is their full residence. So, since we're going up higher, they want to bring it up high enough, which is up to the level here, to get the garage underneath. So, that requires us to move some stairs to the side, which was easy to do, and to add the elevator. So, they have much easier access up to the higher, higher level. Now, when we remove the garage in the back, the air conditioning units used to sit on the roof of the garage currently. So, what we propose to do is fill in this little back corner that today doesn't exist, so that we can put our units, our air conditioning units here within the envelope of the house. And at the same time, when we raise the house, we are extending a stairway inside the house to bring us down to the garage. And there was some utility space there we had to find a new spot for. So, there's a new utility room underneath. But I want to mention that that is only a one-story little corner, and it fits within the building envelope, where we have nicely behind the pent roof stored our AC units, so they don't get in the way and are nicely out of the way. Our elevator will connect only the grade floor and the first two floors. So, we are not going all the way to the top, but this is the piece of the elevator right here, and it's neatly tucked close to the house. It's just six foot by seven foot total space, and it lets them go from the grade floor to the first floor and then to the second floor, keeping it down at two feet, at two, at two levels. And you can see it here in the plan, that it's this small little square, and that is the only place where we need a variance for the side yard, because we are extending into it. But it's only for a length of six feet. I see no negative impacts at all to any of the neighbors, as it doesn't affect anyone's view, light, air at all. And it makes this house much more convenient for the Kaplans for their living here more than half a year, each year.
I would say, Terry's testimony on this one's just spot on. It's a house raise, it's beneficial for everyone. The Kaplans are pretty conscientious about the design. It's only one small area. We would rest, subject, of course, to answering further questions if anyone has them, but this is, you know, on a house raise, couldn't get a better architect, better design, I would say.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the questions from the public? Public portions closed. Leo, would you read a motion?
Wait a minute.
What?
Board. Any comments from the board?
Do you have a comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Substantial, a non-conversion agreement.
Of course. I don't think we could raise it without it.
Yeah. It is in there? It's already in there.
He's the floodplain manager, so he's got a, you know...
He said it was.
You're not going to get the, you're not going to get signed off without it.
Go ahead.
All right, so if there's no further questions, C variance application for the house lift, three variances, side yard setback on the left side, 4.5 feet rates required. Combined side yard setback of 12.5 feet or 18.5 feet required. And building coverage is at 36.1 percent, with 35 percent is permitted. There's the waiver, the area map, the conditions. I'll note the non-conversion agreement and any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report, subject to any necessary outside approvals and any representation made by the applicant during the course of the hearing.
I make a motion?
One question. One question. Is this 102 or 100?
It's 102, correct? At the time the original house was designed, we did not have a number for the house, so we had to assign it a number, and then it never got updated.
So, compliance plan is all? Thank you.
Ready, Leo? Make a motion?
Who's second?
Second, who? Mike Cristaldi.
Okay, thank you. Richard Patterson?
Well, I originally really liked this because they're getting rid of the garage and decreasing landscaping, but apparently they're not. They're decreasing landscaping, but it still meets the total landscape area, so... I see this as the minimus. There's the windows and that. I think it's very good. It only goes two floors instead of three floors, or levels. You're getting rid of that driveway on the side in the garage. I don't see any negatives at all here, and I think that with the houses being so high because of FEMA and CAFRA and whatever, that at the... I vote yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
I see no negatives on this at all. I think you did a good job designing it. I'd vote yes.
Jim Galantino?
It gets rid of the garage. It's on the C-word side of the building. And then, of course, they're elevating a non-compliant structure to be compliant with FEMA. That's a yes.
Jim Galantino?
That I wish to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Craig Pomisano?
Yeah, I also have no problem with this. It's pretty de minimis. Putting the elevator is useful. I approve.
Stephen Giuseppe?
I don't have a problem with this. It's quite de minimis. I approve.
Michael Raffiu?
I agree with the other board members. I don't see any issues with this. I'll vote yes.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I think getting rid of the garage and raising the house to be flood compliant is a benefit for the neighborhood.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seven in the, motion carries, seven in the affirmative.
Okay, next case, next case is Bendill Development LLC, 25 South Madison Avenue, block 129, lot 46, located in the MF... located in the MF Zone District, seeking C variance relief for front yard setback, building, side yard setback, rear yard setback, front landscaping and possibly others to demolish an existing duplex and construct a two and a half story, single-family home in this multifamily zoning district. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, board chairmen, board members. Report is based on the application to Bendale Development LLC, located at twenty-five South Madison Avenue, also known as Block one twenty-nine, Lot forty-six, located in the multifamily zone, FEMA Zone elevation ten as a minimum. And C variance is planning zoning report background is as follows. The applicant is seeking the relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a new two point five story over parking, single-family dwelling in a multifamily zone. Two point five stories are permitted as a lot width meets the minimum requirement of forty feet. Subtle variances are requested as outlined below. Application is deemed complete. It's a substantial benefit variance application, so those proofs have to be mentioned. Zoning chart on page two, continued on page three. And there was a plan revision. The original plans were dated, were revised May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, as opposed to the original plans, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. Let the applicant discuss the minor change in that plan. So the variances are as required as follows. Minimum front yard setback to the principal structure, whereas a minimum front yard setback based on the average is eighteen point three feet. Fifteen point seven feet exists and sixteen point eight feet is proposed. So again, the house is further back than what it was, but not far enough back to meet the average. Minimum side yard setback, principal structure on the left, whereas a minimum side yard setback for lots greater than forty feet is eight feet, three feet exists and seven feet is proposed. Minimum side yard setback, principal structure on the right. Again, a minimum setback is eight feet for lots forty feet or wider. Ten feet exists and five point two feet is proposed. And that is just to the internal stairwell projection. If you measure to the side of the house, it's also seven feet. Minimum side yard setback, porch deck left and porch deck right, same thing. They're in line with the principal structure, so those variances are not only for the principal structure, but for the front yard porch and deck. Front yard landscape coverage, whereas the minimum required landscape coverage per front yard is sixty percent, which could be reduced to fifty percent due to stairs and forty-three percent exists and forty-five percent is proposed. Waiver requested is a copy of an area map showing all properties within two hundred feet. Again, due to the nature of this project, that waiver could be granted without any detriment to the application. Again, the average setback calculations for front yards, including the subject projects, would be eighteen point three feet for the principal structure and eleven feet for the porch decks. The ordinance does not exclude the property in question. This reduces the severity of the variance and at some time in the future, consistent setback requirements will be calculated. And again, this lot is being compared to lots that are one hundred twenty-five feet deep and this lot is only sixty-two point five feet deep. So the properties that it's being compared to have a lot more area to move the houses further back into the property. The grading plan is recommended. Again, Peter shows existing grades and it looks like it will function properly for grading purposes. I just want to see it on a plan. Let's see. The rear setback and its ability to be met is also affected by the depth of the lot. Previously, if a single-family home was to be constructed, the setback for the rear was comparable in that it was twenty percent of lot depth and ten foot minimum. Again, that's one ordinance change that I would like to look at again for single-family homes. That requirement in the MF Zone is for multifamily homes, not just single families. Pardon me?
Is the rear a variance?
Yes. If the property in question were sixteen inches less wide, five-foot setbacks would be required and met. Again, a non-conversion agreement is required for the areas on the ground floor that are used for storage, entry or garage only. Non-habitual space is not permitted. And standard recommendations, and I'll turn it over to the applicant at this time.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren and Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. McLaren had just put on the record almost everything that I was going to read in. We certainly concur with his report. The specifics regarding the single in the multifamily zone, the fact that some of the variances themselves are fairly technical but are not really bulk. But we do need variances regardless, so Peter Weiss designed the house. He is here with me. Mr. Maddox, if you don't mind, I'm going to have you swear Peter in to walk through the plan and justify the variances, noting that this property is certainly less intense than a lot of the other properties surrounding it and it's a single in a multifamily zone. Although the lot itself isn't big enough to put two-family home, it's, in comparison to the properties around it, pretty much as, it fits in about as much as it can because of, you know, something has to be built here. Pete, I think, designed about the best possible project for the site. So Pete, if you don't mind, just sworn in and then walk us through the plan.
All right, Mr. Weiss, just your name and address for the record, please.
Peter Weiss, thirty-eight East Oak Crest Avenue, Northfield.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Pete, you've read Roger's.
Well, except this credential.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. I thought Rich was going to turn, okay. So in any event, Pete, you've prepared the plans, you've read Roger's report. If you could, just walk us through what you've designed and discuss the variances that Roger had noted in his planning notes from May twenty-second.
So the existing lot is undersized for multifamily zone that it sits in. So the largest point six hundred square feet or forty-four hundred square feet is required. It's currently occupied by a two-story duplex. The duplex is deficient on parking because it has two spaces that are stacked, so. My addy cutter, one space has, one unit has no parking. Since this duplex in the smaller lot, it exceeds the allowable density. The existing first floor is below flood requirements and the flood.
So Pete, let me stop you briefly. A non-compliant duplex, which is non-compliant with everything, including parking, including base flood and is too much, according to Margate's ordinance, property on the lot itself. Nothing right now complies, correct?
Right.
It's too dense, right?
It's too dense, there's no parking, it's not flood compliant. Pardon me, I'm, I'm sorry. I lost my train of thought. It's too dense, no parking, below the floodplain. It's debacle. Continue.
To the left of this property on the north side is an eight-unit condo building. And to the right are two single-family homes. I put this in here partly because I had it, because I designed this house years ago, like twenty years ago, but partly also to show the relationship of this building to the front yard as compared to our building. The one next door is similar because it might be back a foot further, but you know, gives you the idea. So what we propose to do, of course, is knock down the existing building duplex. It's supposed to be six family homes, which would be elevated to the ground floors. It's garage, entry, storage. First floor has a living space, second floor, three bedrooms, two baths, third floor, two bedrooms, one bath. The exterior is thin brick at the ground level, fiber cement siding above that. Metal railings in the front, that's whole shingles for the roof. The building is, is under on building coverage and if they are, we are requiring, requesting setback variances on each side. As Roger mentioned, most of the lots, and I could pass this around if you want, most of the lots on the, on that block are one hundred twenty-five feet deep. So because of that, you know, those lots are the ones that establish the front setback. And they all have large setbacks in front and they also have large rear yards. And they also have normal-sized houses or big houses. So our lot and the two lots to the corner have both half the depth of sixty-two and a half feet. So that pushes, you know, our buildings up, the corner buildings up towards the street more. So like I said, these, these two lots are around six feet, five to six feet. We're requesting sixteen point. So that's greater than what's there now. It's only a lot greater than the existing buildings towards the corner. Besides, the rear is required to be twenty feet. Now, there's currently a parking lot behind it. So the next building to the rear is about eighty feet away. And so taking twenty feet off the back of a sixty-two foot lot is a bit problematic as far as developing this site.
And that's because in the MF Zone, twenty feet's required regardless of the depth of the lot, correct?
Yes, it's a fixed number. So it's not a percentage as it is. Then on the sides, the left side here, the current setback to the property line is like three feet, which is right next to the condo. That's also fairly close to the line, might be five feet or something, it's pretty close. So we're increasing that to basically seven feet, the only exception being this little fireplace in here. And on the other side, you know, it's basically seven feet for most of the depth of the building. As Roger mentioned, if the lot was just, you know, that much smaller, the required setbacks would be five feet and not eight feet. Oh, and I also did this little thing to pass around. So if we met with, complied with all the setbacks all the way around, we end up with a footprint that's less than six hundred square feet. So, you know, that kind of means it's not really feasible to build this lot without variance relief.
So Pete, to be fair to say that when we talk about the reasons for granting variances based upon a six hundred square foot footprint, your design would be a betterment of what the ordinance otherwise would allow. And based on what you and Roger have discussed, difference of a very small number of inches on one side would give you a five-foot setback as well.
Yeah.
So the variance itself would be a marked improvement over what could be built by right. And it's also a marked improvement of what's there now.
Yes.
We will certainly answer further questions if the board has them, but I think Pete's testimony and Roger's report speak for themselves.
What's behind this property?
Parking lot. And I think, Mr. Patterson, it's fair to say that will likely always be a parking lot. I don't know how it would be anything else.
Yeah, the parking lot's like, it's all specific, so it kind of runs back behind these three lots that are on the corner there.
Serving?
I don't even know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was a parking lot, so one of the high rises, actually. Well, anyway, I don't know why it's there.
The condo is behind it.
Okay. There's another, no, the condo building.
Serves the condos behind it.
Okay.
Pete, the air conditioner units on the platform, are they finished first floor or thirteen?
They will be, the upper elevation they need to be.
Finished first floor, but they will interfere with the window?
Well, that's always hard to say, equipment, you know, we don't know how high it's going to be. But, you know, this is a dining room, so it's not a question of egress or anything like that. Do we shorten the windows or, you know, this would only have to be a BFE plus four.
The ordinance changed, everything's, mechanical equipment has to be a finished first floor.
It's also where it is?
That's, everything's got to be there, nothing in the ground floor anymore.
Will you make it comply?
Yes, I guess so.
Yeah, and that's a, it's a, yes.
It's a little sound handed, I think.
I'm not quite understanding what you're saying there. It looks to me like the condensers are at the first floor elevation.
No, they're just right below, Mr. Richmond.
Probably ten or twelve inches below.
They're at thirteen.
We'll comply.
Yeah, the ordinance changed.
Sure, the windows.
It just took out all the confusion. Now we're a finished first floor, so nothing down below.
Actually, they're at fourteen. Because the finished floor is higher than fourteen. They're saying it can't be fourteen, has to be higher than fourteen?
It can be fourteen if they're, but the ordinance says finished first, I'm sorry, I'll take that back. They have to be a finished first floor.
So whatever finished floor, yeah. We'll comply with the ordinance requirements for the HVAC equipment.
And the purpose of that is so you get the rating of the first floor and the mechanical equipment's the same?
Yeah, but if the base flood elevation is supposed to be at fourteen and, and for some reason they decide to make it at fifteen, are you saying that the equipment's got to be at fifteen?
Yes.
Yeah, to take the confusion away.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't make any sense, because we could, if we didn't have the ground floor, we could make the building a foot and a half, two foot lower. Right.
Whatever, you will comply. Thank you.
Yeah, no. We'll comply. I agree with Mr. Richmond. That concept is a little bit foreign, but as Pete said, if the house were lower, the condensers would be much lower. But, yeah, if that's your ordinance.
Move on.
So, unless the board has further questions for Pete, you know, I think we would rest subject to being able to recall him to the extent necessary. This is a better option than what could be built by right and it's a much better option for what's there now.
How many units could be built there by right?
Now?
Yes. By right?
The lot's not big enough to put two. There are two there now, which is.
Oh, okay, got it.
The lot itself would have to be forty-four hundred square feet, it's not.
Thank you. Anything from the board, Jim? Anyone here from the public have any comments or questions? Please come forward, state your name and address and then pause and wait to be sworn in.
My name is Regina Albergo, live at seventeen South Madison.
Your last name again, I'm sorry.
Albergo. A-L-B-E-R-G-O.
Ms. Alberto, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give?
G-O.
G-O. Albergo.
Albergo, I'm sorry. Ms. Albergo, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Seventeen South?
Madison.
Got you.
I have more statement than, than to say anything about it.
This is your turn.
First of all, I have the smallest house on that street and I am being, I don't, encroached by all these big buildings. I don't know how high this building is going to be. I have a big condo next to me, which is to say this condo doesn't want to put a third floor. They don't have enough parking for the apartments that they have right now. And when they put their house up, we're going to lose another cutout on the street. So that's another parking space that we lose. I think this board has to change some of the rules, because these houses are getting out of control and as far as.
Let me just explain something. This was a big item in the past election.
I know.
FEMA has made us raise the, we haven't increased building heights. We have not. FEMA has made the first floor come up so high, we have no control over that.
I know, I had to raise my house.
Right. But what I'm saying is the distance from the first floor to the top, so these houses look ginormous. If the basement was cut off, they would look like normal houses. But Sandy changed everything as far as the size of these houses. And, you know, this board certainly took a lot of heat on that, but we're following the law as to what it is.
But with the retail space, you can do something as far as changing that, because I heard all this, I've been here the whole time and I heard that.
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of proposed changes coming along.
And I think there are changes that should be made.
I can tell you some of the changes would affect this lot, but it doesn't affect it now.
No, I know, I understand that. I'm not protesting that.
Right, but there'll be one house instead of two.
I'm just voicing my opinion.
Less parking problem because there'd be one, one unit instead of two?
Oh, it was two before, but they couldn't park. We had, we have to do a dance of parking on our street because of the high rises and the.
But they didn't have off-street parking, correct?
And, and the two high rises and people that come, you know, so it's always a dance to park.
But this house will have two off-street parking spaces.
Yeah, but we're losing one cutout and the cutout is going to lose one parking space.
Right, okay.
We're losing one of game three.
I hope so, okay.
All right, thank you very much. Name and address, please.
Dr. Bonnie Mylis and I live at eleven South Madison, so I am four hours down from.
Stop, stop. You need to be sworn in.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Your address again, I'm sorry.
It's eleven South Madison.
Okay. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Certainly, yes. So my concern is that you're changing the setback from the street. So my concern is if you change it for one property, that you would have to have an acceptable variance on each construction that's built. So it will change the landscape as I look from my patio down the street, that it's, you could be whatever variance from the street curve that you would like to be.
Mm-hmm.
So that's my concern, is it, this would set a precedent for further. So that's my concern, is it, this would set a precedent for further construction that comes along the way. So what is the acceptable setback from the street?
This is a crazy answer, but it varies. It's based on the average of two hundred feet in either direction on the same block. And what his point was, that he, one of the points he raised was, all the other lots are a hundred and twenty-five feet deep. So they're setback because they have room in the back, which skews the average for someone that doesn't have a tw- uh. So that's why they're asking for a variance for that, but that's the reason. It changes with every time a house is built.
Right, so therefore, it's going to be zigzag as you look down the street for the rest of Eleven South Madison.
Right.
Or, excuse me, for the rest of Madison Avenue.
The new house is going to be one foot back from the street more than the existing.
Right, I got you. I'm just saying, the look of Madison Avenue is going to be zigzag then if we had.
But wait, this is, this is, I'm sorry, hold on a second. The new house is setback further than the old house?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Right, I, no, I understand.
I didn't realize that, I'm sorry.
Right, it is, it's going to be one foot further back, but all I'm saying is that the look of Madison Avenue is going to be continually zigzag. And it's, it's, you know, because there's a parking lot behind it, that, you know, i- is, is that the reason to accept all these variances?
No, but it's a, it's a consideration on the rear yard setback, so it's not an encroachment on the neighbor. So for that one particular variance, that's something we can consider. And we can consider a yes or no, there's no, but, but that's why I asked the question, and I wasn't sure what was behind it.
So as far as the zigzag goes, there's a chart here with the average, with the setbacks of the different houses that are involved. And, one, two, three, four, five of the houses involved are, like, one's twenty-two foot, one's twenty-three feet. You know what I'm saying? They're, they're almost all the same coming through. And then there's two houses that only have a five-foot setback off the, off the property line.
They're at the corner.
This, this, this house has a fifteen-foot setback, you know, so I think that, that's.
Pete's correct about one thing, more than one thing, but in this regard, at some point you have to change that ordinance, because without having a unified setback, one street's different because of the setbacks, and it does kind of zigzag.
We're working on that too.
Sure.
As soon as we do one variance, then it'll change for the.
Right.
It changes the percentage, it screws things up, but that's what we have, and, and we're working on that.
Well, then, what that tells me is there's really no standard in marketing city.
Oh, there is.
There is.
The average of the two hundred feet on either side, there's a formula.
It's a moving target.
Right, but her point is, I'm not making it for her, every block, every street, every development is different depending on where you go, because the historic development of that specific street is such that, so.
Yes, I don't like that.
Yeah, not if anybody.
We're working on it.
Well, all I know is that our property was built in accordance and, yeah.
How wide is your property?
Uh, I don't know, off the top of my head, we happen to have a narrow deep property.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public portions closed. Leo, would you read a motion, please?
Yeah. I got front yard landscaping on, on Pete's wife, Pete's plan is fifty percent as opposed to forty-five percent. Is it, you're fifty percent, Pete? Still a variance, I just want to get the number right.
Yes, I think that sort of plays into the whole front setback, because the front yard is considered from the front property line to the building. So if you move the building forward a little bit, you lose that square footage of the front landscape. I mean, we did the best we could by just providing strips for the parking and the.
Yeah, my only question was, Roger has forty-five percent in his report, and your plan says fifty percent. I just wanted to know what the right, the right number was.
I have fifty, so it's still with me.
It's, it's what's shown on your plan, though. In any event, it's a, it's a C variance application for the new, the new home. I'll summarize or I'll go through the variances that are required. Front yard setback to the house, sixteen point eight feet, where eighteen point three is that average requirement. Side yard setback on the left side of seven feet, or eight feet's required. Side yard on the right side to the, that bump out is, the side yard setbacks, five point two feet, or eight feet's required. Minimum side yard setback to the deck and porch on the left side, and on the right side, they're both at seven feet, or eight feet's the requirement. And front yard landscaping's at fifty percent, where sixty percent is required. And I'll, and then there's also a rear yard setback, twenty's the requirement, ten point one feet is proposed. And I'll just note that the lot area is in existing non-conforming condition. There's a waiver from the submission of the area map. The only conditions I have noted are the standard conditions, that, that subject any outside approvals, subject any representations made during the course of the hearing, and then anything else in Mr. McLaren's report unless otherwise addressed.
Yeah, I, fifty percent in the landscape chart, just not, not in, not written out.
Okay.
Fifty percent I, I agree with.
Okay, thank you.
Ready? Make a motion. Second?
I'll second.
There you go.
Richard Patterson?
Well, I think the fact that this is, is back further than the existing house, satisfies me as far as the setback goes. The, the thing that makes me most in favor of this application is that it's one unit instead of two units, and we are doing everything we can to minimize the density in the city. And I think that outweighs the detriment, if any, of, of these setbacks. So I vote yes.
Michael Cristali?
An agreement with Mr. Patterson again. I go from two units to one unit, a compliant building. The setbacks are diminished. I vote yes on the application.
Jim Gallantino?
Both those decks, there was unsafe structure notice on that house, the, causing a structural problem. So I'm glad to see this house torn down. I was going to ask that it be torn down at some point, and just in that alone, I vote yes.
Craig Pomisano?
Yeah, in the multi-family zone, gone from a duplex to a single-family, I'm a wolf for it. I approve.
Stephen Giuseppe?
This is a better situation than what could be here, and I vote yes.
Michael Ruffew?
I agree, I think minimizing the density in that area is definitely a priority, and for that reason, I'll vote yes.
Michael Richmond?
I, I think that the new project, it benefits the new neighborhood, there's more parking. I, I just like the project, I'm going to vote yes.
Motion carries, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Next case is Adam Weiss, Eleven South Iroquois Avenue, Block One, ten point zero two, Lot Seven, located in the S twenty-five zoning district, seeking C variance relief for front yard setback, front yard landscaping area, and possibly others to expand the existing first floor deck. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman and Board members. The report is based on the application of Brad and Sharon Weingart. Oh, wait. Wrong report.
Adam Weiss.
Yep. I had it misfouled. The report is based on the application of Adam J. Weiss, Eleven South Iroquois Avenue, Block One, ten point zero two, Lot Seven, located in the S twenty-five zoning district. C variance relief, zoning report, the applicant, applicant is seeking relief in order to elevate and modify an existing one and a half story, single-family dwelling. Wait a minute, no, you were just, uh. Yep. Two variances are being sought. They're, they're just adding on to a front yard deck. Front yard setback to the porch and deck, whereas prevailing front yard setback is five feet. Four point five feet exist, and three point four feet is proposed. And again, anytime you encroach into the front yard setback, you affect the front yard landscape coverage, which you are. Front yard landscaping is required to be sixty percent, forty-three percent exists, and thirty-nine, thirty-nine percent is proposed. One waiver that needs to be requested is a survey older than one year, and again, I would say that the waiver can be granted without any, as the site has not changed. And a- again, the expansion towards the street reduces the prevailing average, as we kind of hinted at at the last case, but that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Eric Olson on behalf of the applicant, Adam Weiss. One thing that Roger and I did discuss, nice governor's strip right in front, because we want to keep as much landscaping as possible. So Pete designed this project, I think Roger's, it was, it's a brief report, but there's not much to it other than a small.
You said you're going to put a grass strip in there?
Oh, yeah.
Are there trees there already? Okay.
Yeah. So Pete, if you don't mind, please be sworn in again and then walk us through and.
Okay, Mr. Weiss, please raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? Thank you.
Okay, Pete, tell us about the plan here, and we'll be composed of the fact that the positives certainly aren't weighing against on this.
The site, can you hear me? Site is currently occupied by two-story residents. The first floor is living space, second floor is bedrooms. There's decks on both levels in the front currently. Second floor deck runs all the way across, runs all the way across one of the building, and it projects two feet closer to the street than the, the first floor deck. What we propose to do is just add two point six feet to this strip of the first floor deck. The second floor deck will remain the same, so this will come out two point six feet. That would reduce the setback to three point four feet, which is the average of the street, but because of the default five-foot minimum, that's why we're here for, you know, seeking a variance. So what we're doing is, is matching the average of the street. The porch to the house to the left is right on mine. To the right, there's about a two-foot setback to the front. So even though we're requesting it to be three point four feet, we're still further back than the house on either side. As far as the landscape requirement goes, this addition, or the reduction in the landscape coverage is on the order of thirteen square feet. So it's, it's de minimis. To compensate for that, to sort of offset that, we were going to remove some concrete along the curb here, which adds grass. So there's an overall net increase in landscaping in the front with the addition of the grass. We're also taking out some pavers in the back and converting that to grass. So that increases the landscape coverage for the entire lot from what was five percent to fourteen percent. So that's an overall increase, you know, it's almost three times as much.
You're not including the governor's strip, correct?
Correct.
But it does.
I understand, but I just make sure it wasn't in the calculation.
But we're including it in the fact that there'll be more landscaping in general, yeah.
That's really just.
So the overall number you're increasing, that's, that's a benefit?
So the overall number's increasing, and then the look of the house, of course, is increasing, because we can't get credit for the governor's strip, it's not on our property, but the fact that it's going to look better and have more landscaping is a benefit to the city, but also to the applicant. Mr. Patterson, we think that this is a fairly de minimis case, of course, because we're presenting it as one, but to the extent the board asks questions, we'll answer them.
Any questions from the board? Open it up to the public if anyone has any questions.
I just have one comment.
Go ahead.
No Bradford pears.
No, no, trees exist.
The trees are existing.
The trees exist, Steve.
I thought, Mr. Giuseppe, you were going to say, this is great to see so much landscaping on a small lot, but we'll take that comment, too.
So the trees exist, but the strip's going in?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's all cement around there, so they'll replace it with grass.
Again, any questions or comments from the public? Public portions closed. Please read a motion.
All right, so another C variance application for the porch. Two variances, a front yard setback to the porch slash decks, five feet's required, three point four feet's proposed, and then front yard landscaping coverage, sixty percent required and proposed is thirty-nine percent. And I'll note that they're going to put in the grass governor's strip at the front of the property. Any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report, subject any outside approvals and representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearing.
Make a motion.
Richard Patterson?
I, I vote yes on this. The fact that the total landscaping is increasing, I, I think it's, again, this is a small addition. I mean, the house is going up, but the, a small addition to the front porch, which I really feel encourages the niceness of neighbors to each other. So I don't see a detriment to that. I'm happy the landscaping is increasing, so I vote yes.
Michael Cristali?
I vote yes on the project. I think it's good, and I think it's good for the neighborhood with people wanting to sit on the front porch and get to know their neighbors and, and that's enough. I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
I'm satisfied with the application, and I approve.
Craig Pomisano?
The house next door is point zero two, and the other one is two point one, and you're going to be a four point five. I approve.
Stephen Giuseppe?
Yes, I approve of the improvement of the house.
Michael Ruffew?
I don't have anything to add to what the other members have said. I, I agree, and I'll vote yes on this.
Michael Richmond?
I think it fits in with the neighborhood pattern.
I'm going to vote yes.
Motion approved, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Next case is.
Good night.
Good night. Brad and Sharon Weingart, two sixteen North Rumsen Avenue, Block Four nineteen, Lot fourteen, located in the S twenty-five zoning district, seeking C variance relief for eve height and possibly others to construct a third floor addition. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman and Board members. Now I'll read the correct report. Application of Brad and Sharon Weingart, two sixteen North Rumsen Avenue, Block Four nineteen, Lot fourteen, located in the S twenty-five zoning district. Required first floor elevation is thirteen to the bottom, or fourteen to the first floor is a minimum. Background is as follows, the applicant is seeking relief in order to construct a half-story to an existing single-family dwelling, constructed in two thousand fifteen with variance relief for lot width, side yard setback, and combined side yard setback already granted. The addition and the stairwell further reduce the combined side yard setback and requires relief, as does relief needed for the eve height. So this is a substantial benefit variance, application is deemed complete, both administratively and planning-wise. Page two is the zoning schedule, indicating, highlighting the two variances required. Page three continues the zoning chart, and the plans reviewed to create this report, as well as documents reviewed. Section three indicates the variances required for this application. One is minimum side yard setback combined, whereas the minimum combined side yard setback is required is thirteen point three feet. Eleven point four feet exist, which they got a variance for, and eleven point four feet is proposed. Again, that's the expansion of the non-conformant setback for the combined side yards. The second variance needed is a roof eve height, whereas the maximum roof eve height above the third floor is eighteen inches, and about six point six, seven feet is required, as based on the definitions of roof eve height. And the comments are as follows, the home was new in two thousand fifteen, went to the planning board for a few minor variances, the lot width included, and that was approved. The combined side yard setback is being expanded by the vertical addition to the stairwell, which is needed now to get to the third floor. The roof eve height variance is due to the difficulty in adding a third floor to an existing structure while maintaining the roof structure itself. And again, Peter has done a nice job with this application in blending in the third floor with the existing two-story structure. Recommendations are minor in nature, the, you need to satisfy the C one and C two criteria, and maintain and enhance where needed the existing landscaping. So that concludes my report.
I want to change my tie so you wouldn't recognize me.
Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Board members.
I vote yes.
Sharon. I remember Sharon, Sharon and Brad Weingart, Mr. Fekter there, a property on Rumsen Avenue, it's Block Four nineteen, Lot fourteen, two sixteen North Rumsen Avenue. The Weingarts, when they were here with two fifteen, this was a summer house for them. They have since moved here year-round and find that some additional room is necessary for their family. What they're asking for is a third floor, a fifty percent third floor within the existing roof line. And in order to do that, they're asking for a bump-out variance of about a foot, a little more than a foot, on the right side for the, for the stair tower to access the third floor. Otherwise, the third floor meets everything, meets all the criteria all around, except for the eve height, the new control. While it works with new construction, it's difficult to make it work. While it works with new construction, it's difficult to make it work with existing construction. We're asking for variance from that, and a variance from the combined side yard. Again, that's about 12, 12 and 14 inches. Otherwise, the house complies with everything, even as existing, applies to current ordinance, because it is relatively new. And with that, Pete can testify with respect to the variance and how wonderful it is for this property.
All right, Mr. Weiss, one more time, your name and address, please.
Peter Weiss, 38 East Oak Crest Avenue, North Room.
And please raise your right hand. You swear in front of the testimony here about the give will be the truth? And your credentials are accepted, obviously.
Pete, would you take the board through the existing conditions of the property and what's proposed, and then touch upon the variances, please?
So as mentioned, we were here a number of years ago for variances. The existing lot is undersized in terms of width because it's 36 feet wide, or 40.
We may interrupt for a second, Pete, but the lot's 2,800 square feet, so it applies with the density requirement for this zone, for the S-25 zone.
Well, it's a deep lot, yeah, so it meets the area, but it was, doesn't, it meets the area.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, but doesn't meet the width. So we did obtain variances back then for a side yard that have, well, it's basically four feet. So currently, it's a two-story house. It's not elevated, so the park is to the side, and the first floor is a little bit lower. We propose to add a third floor. So right now, there's a den space on the second floor in the middle here. So what we'd like to do is convert that into a storage room, and then there's be a walk-in closet, an additional walk-in closet for the master bedroom. And then the third floor, we're effectively taking what was the den, putting that upstairs, and then creating, well, they call it a study, but Brad is now working at home 100% now, so he needs a space, a quiet space, I guess, to work. So that's what the study is, and that's really, so the combined yard setback is really a result of carrying the existing stair, which goes from the first to second floor, you know, back up to access the third floor. And the eve height really has to do with trying to preserve the existing, trying to preserve as much of the existing roof as we can, partly because the master bedroom is vaulted, and in order to change the roof shape to like a gambrel or something that's sort of been acceptable, we basically have to tear the whole roof off and redo the whole roof. It seems to be, you know, excessive.
So the design has a voids removing, removes the work involved with tearing off the entire roof off?
Yeah, yes. So, I mean, it's 50%, so it's, you know, maybe we tear 50% of the roof off, as opposed to all of it.
So Pete, the required combined side yard setback is 13.3, and we're at 11.4. Does that sound right for your plan?
Yeah, and like I said, that's really the result. I mean, the addition itself really complies, but when you take the combined side yard from the existing lower floors and add that to the, you take the setback of the lower floors and add that to the, where the stairway is, we'd be fishing.
So the stairway is the only thing that's given the requirement of the variance? If the stairway didn't bump out, which it has to bump out, obviously, there wouldn't be a combined yard setback variance?
Right.
Pete, so stairway's no different than a vay window, for instance, vay window protection?
With Tascioni variance is the stairway?
No, no, the eve height.
Oh, okay, okay. I misunderstood.
So, yeah, this is what we used to, still call a pop-up roof. So, you know, it comes in and then it pops up, and then, so it's just the width of the third floor. There's no sort of attic space.
You're also able to maintain the 512 feet.
Sorry?
The 512 feet, you're able to maintain that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Pete, from an aesthetic standpoint, do you think this is obviously an improvement to the street and to the house?
Yeah, yeah.
Excuse me?
Oh, yeah.
Do you think that variance can be, the variance is going to be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without varying the purpose of the zone plan?
Yes.
Could you explain the eve height, the difficulty with the eve height, getting it to meet the requirement?
Well, you'd have to change the entire roof shape. Gable, if you did a straight gable, it wouldn't give me enough space up there to work with. Gambrel, which we could do, and we looked at doing that. Yeah, I wouldn't just do a gambrel for the addition and leave the rest of it. I'd go and do the whole building, which is why I was saying we'd end up doing, tearing the whole roof off and redoing the whole thing.
It would also appear more dense or more bulky, wouldn't it? Because that third floor wall would have to be about six or seven feet. The third floor wall that you'd be creating, if you were to do it by right, would be a six or seven-foot wall. Just looking at your plan. The third floor wall, the new wall, if you did it, tore the roof off, to do a third floor, it would not be 18 inches or two feet, it would be substantially larger than that. The eve would.
Oh, well, no, it depends how you do it. So we looked at, like I said, we looked at doing a gambrel, but that, like I said, first of all, we'd end up doing the whole building, but also that actually increases the volume of the building, because we're adding some attic spaces over here that wouldn't be there otherwise.
Thanks, Pete. Like I said, members, the Weingarts are looking for a little more space because they now live here year-round. When they designed the house in 2015, they thought that would be sufficient. COVID changed everything, but now here as citizens, residents, and residents, thank you.
Peter, without the increase in the eve height, what would we have upstairs on the third floor? If you didn't increase the eve height? Would it be possible to put those two rooms up there? Would they be very, very small? The eve, you wouldn't have the height at the headroom, is that correct?
I'm thinking of vision, just sort of clipping it like this.
You probably haven't rented the center for the.
You wouldn't have, you wouldn't have much upstairs in the third floor, correct?
Probably, you know, 40% of the states that would have headroom.
That's kind of why the eve height.
As opposed to putting the other roof on, and they wouldn't need that variance, and the house would look bigger.
It'd look bigger, house would look larger.
Yeah, yeah.
The house would look bigger, more of a, more of a.
They could get the height in there, but, 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 yeah, they could get the height in there. That's why we do gambrels now. For some reason, we decided we don't like pop-up roofs anymore. But in this situation, it is an addition, and secondly, it sits back. So instead of like having this whole front of the house be a gambrel, it look, from the front of the house, it looks like you only have a two-story, and then when you come back.
That's a good point. Why is there a full bath and bathtub up there with a TV room and a study?
Convenience?
Every, on that point, every application, I'm sorry, not every.
Mrs. Weingart, say something if you don't mind?
Can what?
Mrs. Weingart, say something?
If she's sworn in, yes.
Yes, fine, yeah, okay, thanks.
All right.
Mrs. Weingart, just your name and address for the record, please.
Sharon Weingart, 216 North Rumsen, Marby.
Okay, and Ms. Weingart, you swear in front of the testimony here about the give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thanks.
Chair, you wanted to respond to one of the board members, I think, or a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we have the TV room on the second floor, but that is going to become a second closet for the master's.
You speak in the microphone? There you go.
That's going to become a second closet for the master. So we're losing that room, so we're going to put that up there. And now because my husband, because of COVID, works from home mainly, we wanted to give him a quiet space. And we're putting a bathroom up there because I don't want every, I don't want him to have to run back down to use the second floor bathroom all the time. And we just figured if we're going to the expense, we have no tub in the house, so we figure we might as well do it.
Good point.
Right.
Okay, well, that's my point. 95%, whatever, when they put third floor additions on, they show them as bedrooms. You don't, you don't show them as bedrooms here. They could be considered as bedrooms, and then you wouldn't even be parking. But what you're saying is very convincing that you're getting rid of it then down there, but I think it would be very helpful to your case if you made it a half-bath, a half-bath, and then there's much less likely, because our profitable Mr. Palmisano could put closets in there in a half an hour. Well, a half a day. But I think the fact if you made it a half-bath, the fact that there's a tub up there makes it look like it's the intended bedrooms. And I'm not saying you're lying, I'm not saying any of that, I understand your things, but it would go a lot further, your case, if you made it a half-bath. Thank you.
What, remove the tub?
Yeah.
Chris? The elevation cert is applied with your packet? It's not the correct one.
Why?
It's, it was under, building under construction elevation cert. The real cert is on, we have a copy of it. So this one, we have a final one. It has all, it's incorrect, the information. I can give you the real one. Okay, but it's not the accurate one.
That's a condition, that you get the real one.
We're good, thank you.
Anything else on the board? Anyone here from the public have any questions, comments? Public portion's closed. Please read a motion, Leon.
Okay, so the third floor bathroom, Chris?
Half.
Okay, so the C variance application for the addition to the, to the existing home, two variances, the combined side yard setbacks 11.4 feet or 13.3 feet is required, and then for the roof eve height, 18 inches above the third floor is what's permitted, and they're at about 6.67 feet. I'll note this, the one condition that we just discussed on the record about the third floor bathroom being a half bathroom, and the other standard conditions and that we put in our, anything in Mr. McLaren's report, subject to any outside approvals and any representations made during the course of the hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Rich, Richard Patterson?
I was going to vote yes no matter what it was, but I appreciate your cooperation in making it a half-bath. That was the only problem I had. And again, we get lied to again and again and again, and it's no reflection on you, but I really appreciate you doing that. It makes sense, you don't want to run up and downstairs holding your knees together. So, so yes, and it makes perfect sense. Pete, I think you did a great job there, and not, not the drawings themselves, but your explanation of why you did that and everything makes perfect sense, and that really convinced me, so I vote yes.
Michael Cristali?
That's a shame to lose a tub, because there's no tub in the house. And I vote yes.
Jim Galantino?
I just wanted to clarify that with the elevation cert, because your insurance could be skewed, because the elevation cert doesn't show any engineered openings, and you do have, so it was a non-compliant structure when this was done, but it's compliant now with FEMA.
I think I may just draw a larger.
I vote yes, just for that reason.
Craig Palmisano?
I vote yes. After, I mean, I had a lot of questions in my mind about it, and, but you've answered them, and Pete, you did a very good job. Yes.
Stephen Giuseppe?
I vote yes. It's a, I vote yes.
Michael Refu?
I agree with the other board members. I vote yes on this.
Michael Richman?
I vote yes.
Motion, motion carries, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Last case, Thomas and Candace Baglevo, 206 North Thurlo Avenue, block 421, lot 20, located in the S-40 zoning district, seeking C variance relief for side yard setback, front porch, front yard house, and possibly others to raise an existing home and provide parking underneath, as well as a small expansion over the front door to allow for additional second floor space. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. Report is based on the application of Thomas and Candace Baglevo, 206 North Thurlo Avenue, block 421, lot 20, located in the S-25 zoning district, FEMA Zone AE, elevation nine. First floor elevation is 13 as a minimum. C variance, planning zone report, the applicant is seeking relief in order to elevate and modify an existing one and a half-story, single-family dwelling. Also proposes to have an additional parking below the structure, provide an additional story to make it two and a half stories. No, no, two stories, sorry. It's just two stories. Since the dwelling is exceeding BFE plus three, all existing non-comforming issues become variances, however, the addition is creating some variances as well. Incomplete, substantial benefit variance. Zoning chart on page two, the house was or is 1.5 stories, it's going to be two stories. Highlighted in yellow or shaded, if you have a black and white copy, all the variances planned, reviewed, and received on page three, as well as the documents reviewed, and the variances required are as follows. Front yard setback to the principal building, whereas the prevailing front yard setback is 17.2 feet, 22 feet exists, and 12.8 feet is proposed. Front yard setback to the porch and decks, whereas the prevailing front yard setback is 10.7 feet, 14.3 feet exists, and 9.5 feet is proposed. Turning the page, minimum side yard setback on the right, whereas the minimum side yard setback is five feet, 4.5 feet exists, and 4.5 feet is proposed. Again, because the addition on the second floor, that's an expansion of a non-compliant setback. Minimum side yard setback combined, whereas a minimum combined side yard setback requirement is 16.65 feet, 9.5 feet exists, and 9.5 feet is proposed. Again, that is an expansion of a non-conforming combined side yard setback. Principal building coverage, whereas the maximum principal building coverage is 37%. 26% exists, and 37.4% is proposed. Again, it works out to what, 23 feet, something like that. Full equipment on the side yard setback, I think this, this could be modified to eliminate this variance. Mr. Baglevo can agree to that. So if you can't move it, it's a variance; if you can move it, it's not a variance. Waivers requested, none have been requested. Again, Mr. Baglevo and I sat down several times together going over this plan, and was debating whether to tear it down and rebuild a new house, or lift this house, and decided to lift it and expand it to the growing grandchildren, right?
To your own.
Yep. Okay. They have kids. So again, the comments just reiterate the setbacks or the variances requested. The full equipment can be removed to get rid of that requirement as a, for a variance. The shed that's on the property is to be removed based on the additional storage as permitted by FEMA now under the house. The driveway will be reduced to comply with curb cut requirements and coverage requirements. One additional off-street parking space is being provided for, for a total of three spaces. One thing I have an issue with is the two spaces in the driveway are not centered on the parking space in the garage. If you can move those over, so one will be in line, so you don't have to move two cars to move one, I think that's preferred. And again, just to go over the zoning chart real quick, 2,500 square feet is a minimum square footage required. Mr. Baglevo has 3,600 square feet on his property. Minimum lot width is 40 feet, they are, they have 45 feet. Lot depth is not a requirement, but the lot is 80 feet deep. And again, it's 1.5 stories, they're going to make it two full stories, and minimum roof pitches will be met. Eve height requirements, nonexistent with the, not the third floor, and off-street parking will be more than exceeded, and the setback to the garage door will be met. Mr. Baglevo, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Baglevo, members of the board. My name is Chris Beals, and I represent Tom and Candace Baglevo with Inspector of Property at 206 North Thurlo Avenue, it's block 421 in lot 20, where there's an existing one and a half-story, single-family home, which Tom has designed a really nice renovation of and lift to comply with flood hazard requirements. You've all seen the plan, and what it entails essentially is a bump-out to the rear to extend the kitchen. That creates a variance for the existing non-conforming side yard. Same, same to the front, there's a bump-out to the front on the second floor, but that creates a variance, but the house is still, and the porch is still in excess of, house is more than 12 feet back, and the porch is more than nine feet back from what's there now. Roger, I see a 37.4% coverage versus 37 as well. You saw that? I think, Tom, you can talk about it, if you can make that conform. Address that, sure. Address that, sure, sure. The other comment I have is with respect to the pool equipment. The pool equipment is inside the garage, enclosed garage. Is that accepted from the 10-foot side yard?
That's gonna be issue with the new flood damage prevention ordinance, where they make a sheet, where the, the equipment has to be at the first floor.
Has to be at the first floor?
Yes.
I haven't seen that yet, okay. Not, not above BFE plus, but, but, but?
It's, it's becoming an issue, because once it gets put in the house, all the surveyor showed on the, on the rating is being lowest mechanical equipment. And it hurts the rating for insurance, even though it's not covered, it's this way, it, everything's at first floor.
So, you understand they're gonna want the pool equipment at the appropriate setback? At the first floor? At the fir, at the first floor?
At the first floor.
Even though it's not adopted yet, that's what's proposed?
No, 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 no. It's adopted.
It's, it is adopted.
Yes, yes.
Although you said it's what they're gonna do.
No, we just had this case before where you left to change your tie.
Tom, you're way more familiar with the plan than I am, I'll let you take it.
Yeah, I'll have to.
I know Tom testified earlier tonight, but he swore, he swore, Tom?
That's a new application, so we'll, we'll get you sworn in again. Just your name and address for the record, Mr. Baglevo.
Tom Baglevo, uh, 472 Madison Road, GLOPS.
And please raise your right hand, you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do it.
Thank you.
Can I ask two questions first? Could you address, I think you just did on the pool equipment. And how about number nine, the two spaces, can they be modified or won't that happen? Rogers, recommendations, I'd like to?
Just slide them, if that's possible.
I just want to know what his, what his reaction is to his recommendations.
Why it got to this point? There's an 18-foot curb cut. My curb cut is shared with the home to the left. So, the curb cut is really 25 feet. So, the minute I reduce my curb cuts, I've actually, I have to reduce their access into their driveway, if that makes sense.
What, by putting, by putting, by, by putting a division?
By now, we're putting a curb right up against their driveway, and their curb cut might be reduced too much. I'm, I'm, I probably should have put more detail on here, but, give me one second. This grass strip currently right now, that I'm increasing to, I would say about four plus feet. All right, let me turn it. It's a little bit complicated. The curb cut is all the way back here, and it's all the way over there. So, if I reduce mine down to the normal, I'm gonna have to bring this grass strip all the way out, and they're gonna have trouble getting into their driveway.
Or you will add an 18-foot curb cut?
Yes.
Mine, mine's 18 feet.
Yeah.
But if I add, there's in, like, mine's actually a little less than 18, but we basically have three cars going in on one curb cut that's existing now.
But you, you don't include their curb cut and your curb cut?
Right, but if I build a curb up, I'd now have just reduced their curb cut, and they're gonna have trouble getting in the driveway.
From their property line?
How about if you just, how about if you just leave it in place, as is?
That's what I'm doing. I'm leaving it all the way out here. My portion's 18, that's what I'm asking for.
Right.
Yeah, which is not a variance.
Right, but, but if I have to reduce it more and then get in the driveway, now we're gonna have another little bump that has no value.
Could you explain, Roger, I don't understand.
I'm not following that at all, Tom, I.
Could you explain what you propose?
Uh, that's, that's different. That's the cars on site. What Roger's saying with the cars on site, can you slide them over, so only one's in front of the garage door, not two?
I understand that, but you're saying you can't do it.
I, I explain a little. Well, wait, am I leaving, if I'm leaving the curb cut, I can move the parking?
Yes, just do that.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
All right, so if I can leave the curb cut where it is, I won't disturb my neighbor.
Move those two spaces out at the bottom, over to the left.
Or I just delete one, because I only need two. I have a four-bedroom house.
You can slide them over to the left, I think, Tom?
Yeah, what I, what I tried to do creatively is put the four strips in, and the two middle strips is how I get into the garage. So, I'm, I have less concrete, because I'm using.
So, you can get out of the garage between the two cars parked outside?
No, 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 if one of these, well, I have an old 91 Jeep that I just leave in the garage all the time, and it never moves. But I'm using the two middle strips, the left strip of the one car and the right of the other, to go into the garage. And then I put two other strips, I thought was a great way of using less concrete and parking more cars.
Can you situate the parking so that only one's in front of the garage door?
I could situate the parking if one's in front of the garage door, it's not a problem. I'll just rip out the other concrete and just put one car behind me. Because a four-bedroom house is gonna give me two parking spots.
But you'll still have three parking spots, which is great.
If you're suggesting you just shift them?
Just shift it over.
So, there's just one in front of the door?
Yeah. As best you can.
If I shift them over, I'm gonna go out of the curb.
As best can be made.
Yeah, seeing my curb cut.
There's existing curb cut there, right.
I'm gonna be out of the curb.
Plus, won't you be into your structural column?
I'll be into my column of the kitchen.
Right, yeah, well, yeah.
That's an answer, right there.
What?
I don't want to shift it, I'd rather delete one.
It's gonna be in the way of the column.
Yeah, it's gonna be in the way of the column.
Yeah, yeah.
And on the other side, I have a rendering that I just finished. I have a bracket holding up the, the porch, so I don't lose another parking spot.
Right.
But I'll just drop a column, move it over, but I thought the game was better to get another car off the street.
It is.
So.
Look, if you can't do what Roger's suggesting, I just wanted to know what your reasonings were and if you could comply, if.
Right. I could ea, well, I could easily comply by deleting a car. I'd rather leave the car.
But if you moved your whole 18 feet over, you wouldn't affect your neighbor's curb cut. Why would it affect his? If you moved the whole 18 feet over?
Because then we'd have a little hump separating the two, and that little hump has no value.
At the property line.
At the property line, exactly.
Well, and he still has 10 feet.
But we don't want that anymore.
I want to know if they have 10 feet.
You've satisfied me, I, I got the question, we can move on. I have it right here on my phone.
I'm sorry. So, so far, I just answered the question, right?
Go ahead, you can start now.
So, here's what we're doing. I, my goal was to grab, I literally moved 200 feet off a union onto this street. This house worked out really well. We're saving 70 percent of the first floor structure and the second floor structure. Lifting straight up, the kitchen in the back, because we're having a very Italian kitchen and we want a lot of kitchen. But everything's round numbers, so that's.
Is that an invitation, Mr. Baglevo?
What's that?
Was that an invitation?
Yes. Pizza's every Friday night. We have a pizza oven too, huge one there. So, the kitchen's a 14 by 14. The reason for the 4.4 percent, I'm gonna, I may jump around, but I want to hit these.
Go ahead.
Design-wise. If, if I push the front back, I'm only getting 12-foot bedrooms. I'd rather stick with 12-foot bedroom, I'm not looking for gigantic bedrooms. And I'm not even looking for a third floor. We just want four bedrooms, a large kitchen. Older homes were broken down and had little units. So, we have a large kitchen dining room and kept the living room in the front. So, that's the 4.4 percent. Uh, the setbacks are the same, just enough to have a 10-foot porch for the first floor. Aesthetically, the second floor porch can go away, but I thought aesthetically, it really broke the scale down of the front. And I have a rendering only on my phone right now. And in addition to getting the, the little bit we want on the front yard setback, I hip-roofed all the main roofs. So that the sun would still get into other houses. So, it's, it's not a full three-story, and even the attic, again, is hip-ed back, so it's not as drastic.
The, the front, the tack on the second floor does create, create a variance, but it's really more decorative than anything. You, you'd rather leave it than?
Correct. I'd rather leave it there just because it, it, it allows views through, and it just is a little bit more sensitive.
Only a couple of feet deep, am I right?
What's that?
It's only a couple of feet deep, that's the second floor.
Yeah, it's three feet. I mean, I just, I don't know if that's, that helps, I don't know.
It, yeah, it helps, but it's not necessary. Though, I think you've done a great job considering the, the neighborhood and, and sun and light to the other houses. I, I really appreciate that. I also appreciate it's only two stories, and you're, and you're maintaining or you're improving on an existing house.
Yep. The biggest dilemma is the existing house is four and a half feet from the setback. And I don't want jogs.
Right.
There's no reason, I mean, if we're reskinning the whole outside, why not make it nice and clean? So, I'm not sure if I hit everything.
The front landscaping, you're, you're gonna double that?
The front landscaping, well, we hit all the landscaping.
Right, gonna make it conform right now, it's about half of what's required.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep. Yeah, because we're bringing the first floor up, and the whole underside is gonna be landscaped. So, this whole area is gonna be landscaped. Probably easier in the site. Yeah, so, basically, this whole front's landscaped, except for the four strips for the cars.
And the front door is where?
The front door is on.
Where is it now, I think?
There really is no front door.
I thought so.
Yeah. The front door is on the deck, so you enter the house from the back.
What? You enter the house from the side or back?
The back.
The back of the house?
Is that a fireman problem?
No. That's a UPS problem.
Not our concern.
I mean, we're just.
It was only a question, it was only a question.
To me, you have a stair, you lose, you have to see the other front porch.
Tom, I think you've, you've answered these questions, but obviously, the lift of the house to comply with flood and even higher than required, advances that purpose of the act. It talks about, um, prevention from harmful flood. And the way you've designed the roof and attempted to comply with all the setbacks, in terms of the existing setbacks, uh, do you think the variance is gonna be granted without substantial detriment? Without substantial detriment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance?
Absolutely.
Tom, would you consider making it one window in the front, at the ground level, make it a door?
Or look like a door?
Yeah.
What?
Believe it or not, we've been getting complaints about, well, houses not having a front door.
Why?
Why is that?
It doesn't have anything to do with code, does it?
No, in a residence, you could have a means of egress for like 100 and some feet.
You just can't enter through the garage. I've been getting complaints.
I, I get everything.
Yeah, I got a, I got a door in the back, just there.
Side door on the left side there, isn't it?
Yeah. I have a side door, which is a garage door, because I have a huge beach cart for that.
How big?
It's a four-foot wide garage door.
How do you get on the front porch from inside?
I mean, I could add, I mean, I could add a door, I mean.
Yeah, I'm just curious, how do you get on the front porch from the inside?
From the living room. I'm from, from the living room, I walk right up to the front porch.
And there's a door there?
There's a door into the house.
Right.
I don't want steps down, because I hate to see 17 steps come off of my front porch. I just want it to be.
Is it legal to do, what he's doing?
You could egress anywhere, it doesn't have to be in front of the house.
Well, that's what I'm asking, if it's not a problem, like.
I mean, you could ask Jimmy, but I can't.
You can't, you can't enter into the house through a garage. You have to have a foyer, and it has to be separate garage. Combustibles.
I have a back stair right here, front door.
Okay, as long as you're.
Okay.
As long as you're separate of the garage. It has to be.
If I walk past my house into the yard, I walk up 15 steps and right in the house.
The entrance door from the ground level has to be a separate entrance of the garage. You have to go in the entrance, you can't go in the garage and go up the stairs.
He has a door into the garage and a separate entrance on the back, there's two.
As long as you don't go in through the garage to get in your house.
Tom, is there a door to get into the house aside from the garage?
There's a door from the garage up into the house, and there's a door from the laundry room from the yard. So, two doors into the house, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Perfect. Roger, have you resolved the mechanical equipment? Do you keep, you gotta put some mechanical equipment somewhere that complies with first floor?
Yeah, it's shown in two different spaces, locations on the plan. He has the pool equipment in two different locations, that's why.
No, I have the pool equipment in the garage, which I know I can't do now. But I got the, the condensers above the shower, but I think you're telling me that's not mine.
Well, you say mechanical, condenser units and pool equipment platform above design elevation.
That's a typo, sorry. You're right. So, if my condensers are outside, do they still have to be above the first floor?
At the first.
At first.
Oh, so I gotta raise them up, shoot. I had them above BFE plus four. That's not good enough?
No.
Has to be finished first floor. That's what the ordinance says.
Okay. I'll have to move those up.
Was the state mandated?
Yes.
Yes.
Don't, don't move up the first floor.
What?
So, you'll comply with the pool equipment?
Yes. I will move them up, I'll probably just change the windows, so it's not right outside that window.
Just real quick, this, can I say something?
Yes.
This doesn't have anything to, well, it does kind of, so are you saying that, uh, first of all, this is on houses moving forward, right? Not houses that were already approved under construction, correct? For the equipment?
Right, that's.
Right.
After.
So, it's because a lot of these houses that were raised up really high, they were putting the, um.
Air handlers underneath.
On the HVAC unit in, underneath, but it would still be above flood. So, you're not allowed to do that anymore?
Because it got too confusing. The, the HVAC guys were putting them in the wrong spot, then the builder were blaming HVAC.
Yeah, so now you're gonna have that, on the first floor, you're gonna have to have, uh, you're gonna have to have softening?
But it's not our rule, it's the state rule.
Throw anymore? Right?
I just don't want anything down in the lower level. It's just.
Well, yeah, but at the lower level, the ceiling of the lower level is at like elevation 12 or 13 or 14, or, or doesn't matter, whether it's a, you know. But this, this, this doesn't have anything to do with that.
Well, I'm at elevation 14.
Well, it's not.
That's what I'm saying.
You're telling to put it.
Well, it does, because now I have.
It, it's not, it's, 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 it's not.
Do you, is there something that says you're, you're kind of talking to me at first floor, regardless where it is?
It says right in the new flood damage prevention ordinance.
Okay.
So, if I'm hearing you correct, my roof of my shower is currently right here, with a unit right above it. I have to now pull those units up here, and that unit's gonna be way up. I think it's gonna make more noise on.
Create a deck on the roof, like the, cut a niche, what they've been doing.
Yeah, but now I gotta bring that roof up three more feet. I think that unit's gonna make more noise up there.
On the very top, people create a niche.
Oh, you mean up here, up there?
Yes.
Okay, I could do that, create.
But I mean, it's gotta meet the zoning for Roger.
Oh, yeah, I know that, yeah. That's gotta be all the setbacks.
Right.
Well, I have plenty of room there, because it's an attic. I don't have a floor up there, I could do whatever I want. I got it.
And the air handle?
I will comply mechanically and pool equipment.
And usually, your air handle is right behind the wall, and you just connect it.
Got it.
Thank you. Good, Tom.
Sorry, that was a complicated one. For me too. Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Anything else on the board? Uh, public portion? Sir? How are you? Hell of a meeting you picked.
We're gonna get us some popcorn next time.
Um, public portion is closed.
Okay. Yes, so. Roger, so the building coverage are still that, that 0.4 percent?
Yes.
Okay, and then the, the pool equipment's gonna comply? And the mechanical, okay. So, that variance goes away?
Yes.
All right. All right, C variance application, um, for the following C variances. Front yard setback to the house, 12.8 feet or 17.2 feet's required. Front yard setback to the porch and deck of nine and a half feet, or 10.7 feet's required. And there's a, uh, side yard setback on the right side of four and a half feet, or five feet's required. The combined side yard setbacks, nine and a half feet, or 16.65 feet's required. Minor variance, uh, building coverage 37.4 percent, or 37 percent is the permitted maximum. Um, the conditions, I'll note, anything in Mr. McLaren's report unless otherwise addressed. I will note that, that, the, the, the parking spaces as shown on the plan are okay, so that we're not gonna move those around. And then, um, any other representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearing.